Good evening. I'd like to call our meeting to order. We have the prayer and the pledge by Councilwoman Deidre Ledbetter.
Lord, forgive us for the times we've entered a conversation without really listening. Show us how to listen with open and humble hearts, especially to people different from us. Help our leaders to do the same. Teach us as a nation to focus less on getting our way and more on loving our neighbors, especially the most vulnerable among us. Lord, give our leaders and prospective leaders the strength to be humble, soft-hearted, and willing to listen to every voice. At this time, we pray for discernment so that we may choose leaders who hear your word, live your love, and keep in the ways of your truth as they follow your ordered steps and guide us to your kingdom of justice and peace. We ask this in the name of our Lord and Savior. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mayor Proton Ricky Gonsalas.
Present.
Councilmember Brooke Markout.
Here.
Councilmember Margaret Lewis.
Here.
Councilmember David Broussard. Councilmember Deidre Ledbetter.
Here.
Councilmember Dede Johnson-Reed.
Here.
Councilmember Dustin Swier.
Here.
Thank you. We have any public comments or cards tonight? Hearing and seen none. This time, I'll ask you to please put your phones on vibrate, and we will move on to item 2A.
Acceptance of the minutes of September 5th, 2023, which will be published on September 21st, 2023.
I need a motion.
So moved.
Motion by Councilwoman Margaret Lewis and a second by, not sure who the second was. Okay. Councilwoman Dede Johnson-Reed. Is there any discussion on our September 5th minutes? Hearing and seen none. Please vote your machines. Thank you. 3A.
Dr. Patrick Shawn Bakay to announce his candidacy for a coroner of Iberia Parish.
All right, you hear me? Okay. My name's Dr. Shawn Bakay, and I'm seeking the position of coroner. A little bit about me. I was originally born in Bill Pla, Louisiana, not too too far from here. Went to school, I have a master's in business administration, and also have received my medical doctor. I went to, for my medical doctor at LSU in Shreveport. And then from there, I did a family practice residency in Lake Charles, Louisiana. From there, I moved to New Iberia, bought a house right there off of the period. My kids, I have several kids, they went to school from, you know, 3K till, I got two of them right now that are in college at LSU. So I have one left in school, he's a junior at CaliCon. So, anyway, so we started my private practice 18 years ago here in New Iberia. And then approximately 11 years ago, it was actually closer to 12, it was December of 2011. Ellen Mullen was the, one of deputy coroners. And she decided, I think they had some kind of accident at the base or something, a chemical spill, if you don't remember. And anyway, shortly after that, she decided she, you know, she didn't want to be the deputy coroner anymore. And then, so Dr. Ditch called me up and asked me if I wanted to do it, and I said, sure. So, since 2011, I've been a deputy coroner for Dr. Ditch. So, so it's been a while, you know, it's been a while, it's been a good experience. I've learned a lot of stuff. And so, I feel like, you know, I have my own business. I've been renting from the hospital for 18 years, I think, I figured we paid him over half a million dollars. So anyway, so we still practice, I have a practice right there behind Don't Chief Hospital. And then recently, you know, I came aware that I guess Dr. Ditch may not be seeking the position. And so it was kind of last minute, he actually called me. He had told me something, he was thinking about it, and then the Monday before, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, the qualifier. And the Monday at eight o'clock, he calls me, he says, I'm not running. And so, that's, so the next day, my opponent, he registered, and then the following day, I went and registered for the position, you know. I've been supportive of the community for, you know, 18 years, my kids go to school here. You know, we rent here, we live here, right in the city, we just got our road redone. You don't want to talk about road today?
Oh, we will, we will.
Okay, all right. Anyway, that's, that's kind of, you know, if y'all, I wish y'all, you know, support me in my, you know, this road is adventure, so. That's all I can ask of y'all, both. Thank y'all.
Thank you.
I had a question. Do you like your road?
Well, it's, so far, it's pretty good, it's, they put some yellow lines today. So.
Okay.
I'm satisfied when it goes all the way to my house, I'm good.
One more question.
It was good meeting with you the other day, thank you for stopping by.
All right, no problem, no problem, I appreciate it. Oh, yeah. So, getting to meet a lot of people around here. You know, I kind of basically, I'm kind of a family man, I mean, I do stuff with my wife and kids mostly, you know. I even started a fishing team at CaliCon, and so we doing the fishing stuff with, you know, he has a friend who comes along, and I'm the captain, so. You know, right before this happened, I was actually fishing in Manchak several, you know, several weekends, trying to find some fish and stuff, and for them, you know, they want to go to football games and chase girls, so. I have to do all the work.
Last thing, just because your road is done, don't forget there's some other roads that need to be done.
I've already heard the spiel already.
Good, thank you, sir. Thank you.
For the medical.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
So he did a good job of trying to convince us to get a couple of votes.
Thank you.
Excellent. I just wanted to make a little statement, this is one of the strangest positions that is an elected position, I think. I feel like you have to have a resume to be able to be a coroner. I don't know, it was just strange to me.
Yeah, I mean typically, I think, honestly, look, if Gerald Illister was alive, I wouldn't be up here. He passed away, and that's when the opponent took over. And if he would have wanted, because he would have been there longer than me, I would have just, you know, I wouldn't, I wouldn't run against him, you know. And so, but feeling, you know, the amount of years I've done, and I feel like, you know, I at least deserve a chance at it, you know.
You have the resume. Yep, all right, thank you.
Okay, no problem, thank y'all.
Thank you, sir.
Madam Clerk? Item 4A.
Special ordinance number 2022-2023-30, amendment number 29, and ordinance amending the budget for land purchase and road at Pepperplex.
I need a motion to open our public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mayor Proton Ricky Gonsalas and a second by Councilwoman Brooke Markout. Is there any public comment on this item? Hearing and seen none. I need a motion to close.
Motion, second.
Councilwoman Dede Johnson-Reed and Councilwoman Brooke Markout, thank you very much. Item 4B.
Ordinance number 2023-20, an ordinance ratifying the mayor's signature on a purchase agreement for a parcel of property located adjacent to the New Iberia Pepperplex and further authorizing the mayor to continue with the purchase of said property and execute any and all documentation in connection therewith.
I need a motion.
So moved.
Motion to open this public hearing.
Second.
Oh, it's a different item, all right, all right. So, who had the motion?
Our laws.
Okay. Yes, sir. Councilwoman Margaret Lewis and who had the second, Councilwoman Dede Johnson-Reed, thank you. Is there any public comment on this item? Hearing and seen none. Motion to close.
Motion.
Second.
Councilwoman Brooke Markout and Mayor Proton Ricky Gonsalas, thank you very much. 4C.
Ordinance number 2023-21, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to negotiate and execute an intergovernmental agreement for shared sewer services by and between the City of New Iberia and Iberia Sewers District Number 1 of Iberia Parish.
I need a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Mayor Proton Ricky Gonsalas and Councilwoman Dede Johnson-Reed. Any public comment on this item? Hearing and seen none. Motion to close.
Motion.
Second.
Councilwoman Brooke Markout and Councilwoman Dustin Swier, thank y'all very much. 4D.
Ordinance number 2023-22, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to negotiate and execute an act of donation by and between the City of New Iberia and 5K Property Management LLC for the donation of a parcel of property to the city in the Little Brooklyn neighborhood.
I need a motion to open this public hearing.
Move.
Councilman Dustin Swier and Councilwoman Dede Johnson-Reed. Is there anyone to comment on this item? Hearing and seen none. I need a motion to close.
Motion.
Second.
Councilwoman Brooke Markout, Mayor Proton Ricky Gonsalas, thank y'all. Item 5A.
Special ordinance number 2022-2023-30, amendment number 29, an ordinance amending the budget for land purchase and road at Pepperplex.
I need a motion.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Brooke Markout and a second by Mayor Proton Ricky Gonsalas. Is there any discussion on this item?
So.
Yes, ma'am.
I know the last time I kind of voiced my opinion about where we're getting the money, the source of it from.
Yes, ma'am.
I won't rehash that. The only thing I will ask is that, at some point, can we like, and you may already be doing this, track all the money we're spending on the Pepperplex so we can see whether we're going to do a break even, when we get to a break even point after we get it going?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah.
I mean, it's a little hard to tell you exactly when that will happen.
No, I know.
But we can set some targets.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Any other discussion? Yes, sir.
Just, I mean, just hearing from the community about the plants, do that, they're extremely excited about this acquisition. They think it's a huge improvement to our traffic situation. So as we discussed it and hashed it out, that we thought we had some issues, I think we addressed it in here on, I really do.
Anybody else? Then I'd ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you. Item 5B.
Ordinance number 2023-20, an ordinance ratifying the mayor's signature on a purchase agreement for a parcel of property located adjacent to the New Iberia Pepperplex and further authorizing the mayor to continue with the purchase of said property and execute any and all documentation in connection therewith.
I need a motion.
Motion.
Second.
Councilwoman Brooke Markout, and I think Councilman Dustin Swier had this one. Any discussion on this item?
So.
Yes, ma'am.
The one thing I noticed in here, and there wasn't another paper, so I'm asking this question because there wasn't more information. Is this allocating you to, allowing you to negotiate within the money that we actually have set aside for this? Or could this go more than what we've already set aside to buy this property?
For the sale of the property, I think we're locked in. We have a buy-sell agreement, that won't go over.
Okay.
For the construction that's left, we'll use the balance of the money that was shifted, plus money from the TIF. So the only one that could go over would be something with the construction. I don't think it will, I've gotten pricing. But as far as for the land purchase, it won't exceed what we.
Okay.
Because we've already signed contingent upon y'all approval and allowing me to do this. But we're already locked in, the first thing you do in real estate is lock in the price.
Right.
So that price has been locked in.
Okay, that's what I was really more, because I mean, obviously, we'll hear more about the construction as we get started with that. I just wanted to make sure that we're going to stay within that budget that we have for the purchase of the land.
Now, we have a weird rule that we can only buy property for what, no more than what it appraises for.
Right.
So the next step is going to be to quickly contract with the appraiser and then get that underway.
Okay.
Because, like I said, if it would be something screwy, remember on the school, we ended up buying the school for $10,000 cheaper than what we agreed to because we went back to them and said, that's all it appraised for.
Right.
So, you know, we are bound by the law, but within reason, it will stay the same.
Okay, all right.
Cool. Anybody else? Then I'd ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you very much. 5C.
Ordinance number 2023-21, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to negotiate and execute an intergovernmental agreement for shared sewer services by and between the City of New Iberia and Sewers District Number 1 of Iberia Parish.
I need a motion.
Move.
Second.
Motion by Mayor Proton Ricky Gonsalas and a second by Councilwoman Margaret Lewis. Is there any discussion on this item?
So.
Yes, ma'am.
Have you spoken with them since the last time we all talked about this particular issue? Has anything changed?
Nothing that I know of has changed.
Okay.
I have sent them the agreement. I was waiting for this to be official, I sent them, you know, just the draft. Soon as this is official, if that's the way we decide, then tomorrow morning, I will be sending it to them again, but we haven't had any further discussions.
Okay. All right.
Anybody else? Then I'd ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you very much. I'll get on that tomorrow morning. 5D.
Ordinance number 2023-22, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to negotiate and execute an act of donation by and between the City of New Iberia and 5K Property Management LLC for the donation of a parcel of property to the city in the Little Brooklyn neighborhood.
I need a motion.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Dustin Swier, and I had a second by Councilwoman Margaret Lewis.
That was pretty low. Low, but I heard you. You did it.
Any discussion on this item?
Because you got sick on me.
I just have a comment.
Yes, sir, sure.
After looking at this site plan of what's to take place, I don't see why the neighborhood would be against this one bit, and I'm sure they're very thankful.
And the feedback we've gotten has been positive.
It's been positive, so I, that's all I have to say, I'm really happy to see something like this happening to an eyesore.
And that's, I'm sorry, sorry, Dustin.
That's it.
Thank you, yes, sir.
And, Mayor, that's for the turnaround, the pavilion-type thing that's going to replace the big two-story warehouse-looking building?
Yes, the warehouse building will be coming down, it's in need of demolition. The part of the deal, the owners and the neighborhood association came up with the money to demo the building. We take it as a donation with the funds to demo. Because it's what fair to just say, here's my problem, you take it, it's now your problem. So they actually will contribute to the demolition cost. And then we apply the capital outlay with the drawing that's attached, and we got funding. So this will be a little neighborhood bus stop and a little small neighborhood park.
You didn't get any pushback or anything, that's why I kind of was, that's what made me.
One or two. But, like I said, the majority of the neighborhood is thankful, and they're happy that this is coming to fruition.
That's beautiful.
No, it's good, it's solving a problem.
However, I did see some other areas in the city that could use something like that.
Well, sir, I kind of already contemplated, if they said that before, I'm sure when this one's finished, we'll be doing some other little neighborhoods.
Some of them might be in, one of them is in your district, Ms. Ledbetter, I pick up a girl to go to school over there with my daughter.
And like I said, this was a unique situation where the family donated the property, so that helped us, and then came up with the money to tear it down.
You finished? Yes, sir.
Yeah, these are terms we kind of worked out over months with the family.
Yep.
And I have copies of the emails and agreements here. And we've told everybody that this is a promise that we're going to make that's, you know, it's limited by the money that we receive. So we can, we're going to do the best we can to build what's on the site plan. But we only have to build as much as we get the money for. So I think everybody understands that. We also need to get the demolition money.
Before.
From the neighborhood group and from, I think there's a church involved, yeah, before we take it. Because we don't want it unless we can knock that thing down.
Correct. Yes, ma'am.
Is there any reason why we didn't add it to our other list of demolitions so that we could have saved a little money?
Wasn't sure when it would happen, number one, and then.
Or if it would happen.
Or if it would happen, so I thought of that, but we, did we put it on? I didn't think so.
Okay.
But we felt that they were putting up the money to do it, it was part of the deal. And I was scared that, one, we wouldn't get the grant, and then I had already committed to something.
Okay, all right, that makes sense.
Yes, sir.
And if we demoed it, we wouldn't own it.
Yeah. Yeah.
Unless we seized it and all that stuff, so this was.
No, I meant with the family's permission, like we've done with the other ones.
Oh.
Right.
This was already in the works?
Yeah, this is far down the road in the works, and then again, what if we don't, we still don't know if we're getting the grant, so.
Right, no, I mean, if we get it and if they could be added, maybe we could save a little money and add it to the other stuff, construction costs, just a thought.
Yeah.
I thought the same, but again, as you said and as the attorney confirmed, we were way already in, we were in the deal already.
Yeah, very much so.
Had the commitments we needed.
And then what if it didn't happen, you know, I mean. And I didn't spend it yet, but we also took the risk in a way of asking for capital outlay because can't go back and get any more, you know.
Right.
Anyway. Anybody else? And please vote your machines. Thank you very much. 6A.
Resolution number 23-145, approving substantial completion for the steel tank painting and blasting project at the Sucrose Drive wastewater treatment plant and authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documentation in connection therewith.
I need a motion.
So moved.
Motion by Mayor Proton Ricky Gonsalas and a second by Councilwoman Deidre Ledbetter. Thank you. Any discussion on this item?
Got to do maintenance. We're going to be handling a lot more material in the near future, so we need to maintain what we got.
True.
Anybody else? Yes, ma'am.
They come in on budget?
Yeah, yeah, came in good.
Okay. Just checking.
I mean, best bid, you know.
Couldn't remember, we've seen a whole bunch of those change orders, I'm like, I can't remember, I better ask.
Not on this, we're good on this one.
This is something that we had to do that popped up.
Right.
You know, we're good on it.
Anybody else? Then I'd ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you. Save those change orders for another day. 6B.
Resolution number 23-146, awarding contract to Southern Constructors LLC for the Sucrose Drive wastewater treatment plant backflow preventer project and authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documentation in connection therewith.
I need a motion.
Motion.
Councilwoman Margaret Lewis and Councilman Dustin Swier. Questions on this one?
I saw you looked this way.
Yes, ma'am, I did, I look every which way.
Yeah, all right.
No comments? Then thank you, I'd ask you to vote your machines. Appreciate it. Make Loco happy with that one. 6C.
Resolution number 23-157, approving change order number 2 for the LCDBG fiscal year 2021 sewer system improvements project and authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documentation in connection therewith.
I need a motion.
Motion. Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Brooke Markout and a second by Councilwoman Dede Johnson-Reed. We almost had a second professional come up. I was like, okay, Paul, you know about sewer systems? Any, you probably do, but any discussion on this item?
That's in our packet or no?
Right.
She skipped.
That's why.
What's that?
Or was that amended?
That's amended.
Amended, yes, amended.
Yeah, that's amended.
Okay.
It's not in your packet.
So, what are we doing?
Go on by yourself, Ms. Donna.
So wait a minute. You said 6C, right?
Yes.
It's the new 6C.
Oh, yeah.
It's a new 6C. Yes. Hey, and you want to tell us about it?
Okay, yeah, so y'all don't have anything in your packets?
No, we amended the budget and.
Right.
Okay, all right.
And we emailed it.
This is Brooke's project, working with the San Ines Pump Station. In the demolition of that pump station, the existing wet well, it's made out of concrete, 20 feet deep. In 2005, it was lined with an epoxy product. And it appeared when we inspected it that the epoxy lining was in really good shape. When they demolished it, though, different story. It tore, the ceiling was coated all in one with the walls, and it tore. And so we said, okay, not the end of the world, let's just cut it back, and then we'll reseal just the top where it kind of tore. Well, the adhesion to the concrete wall failed, basically. So it just peeled like a sheet once it was torn at the top. So what we, what we thought was good, it, when it was intact, it was doing its job well. But as soon as it tore, it just kind of started falling apart. So we didn't know that in advance. And so now we're going to, we're recoating the other side of that dry pit, which is going to be converted to a wet well. So we're, we had in the budget to coat that side, so we're just adding this. Luckily, the contractor will be there, so we're, you know, we're not paying mobilization and everything else. So we're getting a fairly good view, even though it's, you know, $23,000, so. It just, it has to be done. And, you know, we're at the end of our budget year, so it's tight. Normally, we would try to transfer from within, but we just, we can't do it. We just, we're at the end of our rope this year. So that's what this is for.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Questions, comments? And I'd ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you. 6D.
Resolution number 23-147, approving certificate of substantial completion for the Fulton Street Landing Project and authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documentation in connection therewith.
I need a motion.
Move.
Second.
Motion by Mayor Proton Ricky Gonsalas and a second by Councilwoman Brooke Markout. Hello, Paul.
Hello, Freddie, good evening, council. So Felicity's Landing, our Fulton Street, it's the same project. This is a state-funded, capital-outlay project approved by Facility Plan and Control. The architect we work with is Mr. Lee. So, anyway, Coastal Timbers is the contractor for the project. And in Freddie and I's opinion, and out of my structural engineer, we feel like they've reached substantial completion. This weekend is the Sugar Cane Festival. We would like to hold off from actually opening up the building. We have just a couple of small things we want to take care of, especially lighting. We want to make sure, there is a punch list, there are some items that are in back order. There's a major panel that cannot be received until November. But that doesn't mean the facility can't be used during the daytime. So we're at a point to where we think that it probably would be available for the gumbo cook-off, which is a couple of weeks away. We just don't want to open it up prematurely, but in fact, we think the contractor has messaged that. Any questions?
Questions, comments? Yes.
So I walked by there the other day, but I, there's no sign right now, right? Because I didn't see a sign.
Oh, yes, ma'am, big sign.
God, I must be blind.
Here's the sign, it lights up from both sides.
Okay, because remember when we were talking about that the other night?
And then you said you were going to ride by and look at the sign.
Yeah, I didn't see it.
Okay.
Okay, I guess I have my glasses on. It looks beautiful.
No, the sign really came out good.
Yeah.
And it's big, and it lights up, you know.
Because I wrote, after I talked to you.
I know, yeah. Yeah. Well, we didn't talk after, so I said, okay, I'm sure she went, saw the sign, yeah.
I did. I'm like, okay, well, it's not there, but I guess, all right.
How fast you going down this street?
Yes, sir.
So, Jeff, typically, we don't vote for substantial completion So, um, Jeff, typically, we, we don't vote for substantial completion until the product that we've funded is fully operational and paid for, and, and in this case, we stepping off a little bit, are you okay with that?
Well, how complete is it?
Sir?
How complete is it?
Uh, we think it's the object side complete.
You think it's substantially complete?
Yes.
You give them substantial.
Yeah.
Please.
You're right.
Our, our normal way is we keep retainage, we give them substantial completion, and then they have that forty-five day period while we're holding their money to do the punch list. Then you're right, we don't pay them all the money until the punch list.
Correct, that's right.
But this, this kicks off that time.
Okay.
Yeah, and until the lean period runs.
Yeah, and the lean period. Yeah, that's why it's in forty-five days.
So there won't be no punch, this is, okay, I got it.
Any other questions, comments?
A pull-up and tie your boat to it?
Yeah, that, it's, it's about six feet wide, we couldn't come out anymore, that's like the total width because of the navigable waterway, but you'll pull up boats. We envision that boats will tie up for the day sometime, cause that's how people go downtown and they go shop and go eat and do whatever they do.
They got enough water.
Yeah, and you'll be able to put boats all along there, uh, like I said, but they're not gonna stay overnight. If you stay overnight, we're gonna do that in the marinas.
Okay.
But this also, we are hoping, and I've been talking to somebody, we're hoping this will also give us a tour boat opportunity. Yes, ma'am.
Would we, would it be possible for us to put, like, um, a marker that tells Felicity's story?
I wanna do that. We have the one in front of City Hall that the state put in, but those markers that you and I looked at, that are gonna become the city marker, and if you're gonna spend your money on that, that's coming, we need to do that. No, you know how Laney's really on me about all of us spending our money, but anyway, that same marker design is, is great. So I plan on doing at some point a Felicity's one.
Well, since it's in my district, I'll.
We can use some of that money.
Yeah, we'll.
Oh, awesome, awesome.
Okay.
Awesome, and that should be an easy one, cause we already have the history.
Right.
But I would definitely wanna do that to tell that story and tie all that in.
And when we, unfortunately, when we do ribbon cutting, Michael Bell won't be here.
I know, man, I know, that, that, that upsets me. I did a post when the sign went up that I wished Michael was here to see it, cause that, that was his baby, you know? He pushed and educated a whole lot of people for a whole lot of years about Felicity.
Yeah.
You're right.
I do wanna add that the U.S. Coast Guard and, um, the Army Corps of Engineers have all weighed in on this project, and so it, it is in the navigational waterway. And so as Freddie's indicating, the, the boat traffic can tie on, but it'll be, it'll be limited, but it is approved by them as well.
So is there a time where they have to move, like, are we gonna post a sign saying?
We have signs and rules, and, uh, when that one's open, we'll be putting a sign that they have to stay less than twenty-four hours.
Okay, so it's not like a nighttime thing?
Yeah, in other words, it could, cause we have navigational lights, and I mean, if we have something downtown, if we have, uh, let's say when Test Tunes kicks up, when we start doing, that's our version of downtown alive, okay? After we have the new pavilion, uh, and that begins, I mean, I can envision that you might come from your house in a boat, so I don't wanna put a time limit of, you know, dusk. I mean, boats have lights, they have the navigational equipment, I mean, they have to have everything to be on the water anyway.
Right.
So I think if we just say that you can't stay longer than the twenty-four hours, we'll cover.
Okay.
People aren't staying and.
So does it have to be a boat, or can it be like, um, those little?
A jet ski?
I can't get the name of it.
Jet ski.
Yeah, yeah, that, that's, that's also licensed by the, you know, uh, registered and everything by Wildlife and Fisheries, so that's fine. It can be a kayak, it can be a, you know, wave runner, it can be a boat.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I know there's some people that have some of those, uh, jet skis.
Yep. Anybody else? And please vote your machines. Thank you. Six E.
Resolution number twenty-three dash one forty-eight rejecting bids received for the Bayou Tesh Museum Phase Three project.
I need a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Councilwoman Deidre Johnson-Reed and a second by Councilwoman Brooke Marquardt.
Alright, good evening. So at the end of July, we accepted bids for the last phase of the Dock Four reswing at the Bayou Tesh Museum. We only had one bidder participate in the bidding, and their bid came in four hundred and thirty thousand over budget. So it wasn't a very ideal bidding situation, especially only having one bidder. So we went through a process of value engineering with that, that bidder to see if we can get the project down. We got it within about eighty thousand dollars, but there was not much more to, to push with the contractor. So we went through some different avenues, we even went to the state to see if they had some more money, which they didn't. So our last resort was to reject the bid, and we're gonna rebid the project. We're gonna take some more value engineering, I met with the museums, uh, today and went over all that, so, um, we're gonna try to get it back into a alignment of, you know, closer budget items. So, um, we wanna rebid it this Thursday, we're gonna start bidding it again. We're gonna work on trying to get more contractors to try to jump on board and look at the project, cause one isn't enough. I mean, it's just not competitive at that point.
We can't gauge, you know?
Yeah.
It's the first time we went through that reconsideration board. I tried that, contacted, uh, State Rep in Baton Rouge and said, can you help? They said, sure, but it didn't apply, it didn't comply with the rules, so we couldn't do it, but I didn't even know that existed. So with some capital outlay, you can appeal to that reconsideration board if you're over budget. This, this project wasn't one of those to begin with, but it was neat to understand the system because something, at least I would try it every time, all they can do is tell us no.
So basically, are you gonna take pieces of it, the project?
We have some, it's all mostly an interior build-out, so there are spaces on the inside that are not, uh, required by the state fire marshal or code, they're just supplemental spaces that we will probably leave, uh, roughed in, and just, they'll need to build them out in the future. But it gives them, you know, egress, it gives them restrooms, it gives them an elevator, it allows them to build the second floor exhibit space out as they need. So we're just really talking about some support spaces, offices, uh, break room, some storage areas, so it's just things like that. We also went through it and, uh, found some more value engineering items that we can consider.
Okay.
But we think the key is just try to get more bidders.
Definitely.
And we definitely have some that are already interested, uh, we talked to, so.
Good. Any other questions or comments? And I'd ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you all. Six F.
Resolution number twenty-three dash one forty-nine awarding contract to Kuzan Services LLC for the American Rescue Plan Act project entitled upgrades to Steamboat Pavilion and authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documentation in connection therewith.
I need a motion.
Move.
Motion by Mayor President Ricky Gonsalana, a second by Councilwoman Deidre Johnson-Reed. Is there any discussion on this item? David, you wanna tell us about it first?
Yeah, let's just go over the project first, and then we'll talk about the bid.
Okay.
So this is the Steamboat Pavilion Expansion Project. It is located between the Steamboat Pavilion and the Fulton Street, um, in the parking lot that's currently walled off. We are looking to extend the usable area of the pavilion, uh, continuing out toward the bayou, with then with the construction of a permanent stage structure. The stage is larger, uh, than what they rent, a bit larger, um, but there's a lighting rig system that is being donated to the city, I'm told, that we wanted to make sure it fit in. That was the big, kinda, the sizing criteria. The stage, as you could see, next to the Veterans Memorial, Steamboat Pavilion, Fulton Street, uh, we're utilizing the existing walls that are there, that are left from the old pavilion, or Steamboat Warehouse Project, and we're actually gonna construct the stage. And below the stage is gonna be some restrooms and storage, and these restrooms are replacing the restrooms that were used for the Visitor Pavilion. Uh, there's about eight water closets in there, um, so it's ample for, you know, maybe not huge festivals, but it does supplement in case there's a dedicated event, um, that you need some restrooms and people don't have to go rent portlets and stuff. Uh, but the restrooms are also, oh, you can flip to the next one. So in the middle, there's some gates, and those will be able to allow people to access the main restrooms, which is the multi-use, but off to the side, we'll have two single uses for, for daily, act, you know, action. So everybody, you know, has a access to the restroom.
All of them will be locked and unlocked as needed. I wanna keep those, even the small ones will be locked and unlocked every day.
Every day?
Yes.
Okay, cool.
Yes, I need to try to keep some activity there.
Yeah.
So the stage is twenty-eight feet deep by forty-eight feet wide and about eighteen feet in clearance, and it's a forty-two inch stage from the dance floor to the stage. So it gets ample visibility, you know, you can imagine of a concert going on or speech, and people can sit or dance or whatever, and you have ample space. The construction of the, the building is intended to be, uh, built to last, so we have no wood on this project. Everything is either masonry or steel or concrete. Nothing to rot, nothing to deteriorate, um, and at least, you know, having some preservation to it, and that, you know, what a public building, that's a really important idea to pursue, because maintenance is always a difficulty, and you wanna have something that's gonna build to last. So that's what we have constructed, it's a lot of CMU, we have brick and we have steel, um, and that's, that's it, that's the only materials. We did wanna kinda blend the two buildings together, so architecturally, we have brick that kinda will, uh, complement the brick on the front from the original warehouse, you know, some of the same, we have louvers, we have, you know, metal panels, probably same color, just things to help tie it all together. It's also been set up for, um, adaptability, so we have a lot of power for the stage, so renting generators, you know, depending on the band size, may not have to happen. And then they have the capability to put their own lighting on the structure, um, so it's a lot of flexibility for, um, vendors and different uses. And there will be some basic lighting on the pavilion, um, no fancy lighting configurations, but just some basic lighting to help, you know, you can have a small event and still light it up.
That's good.
Yeah, so that's it. We have a few other photos, I think that kinda just shows it from the back. And then that's, um, kinda from the Fisher Alley side, and you could see, right, there's a brick line, uh, where that gentleman in the white shirt is and the blue jeans, and that's about the line where the, to the right is the existing, uh, floor area, and to the left is the new floor area.
Okay. That's nice. I have a question about the, the bid.
Yes.
So the, uh, the base bid, which is, I think, what we thought, it, then all of a sudden, you look at the document, it's, it's down, I don't know, two thousands, I guess forty thousand, maybe fifty thousand, something like that, and it says, uh, keeping project. So those things that are gonna be covered, but we're not having to pay extra for them?
I'm not following.
Okay, so.
We take the base?
The bid was one million, two hundred and twenty-five thousand, right? When you look at the sheet that you gave us?
Yes.
And it says the thirty-two thousand, twenty thousand, deduct alternate, keep the project.
Those are the alternates, and we would like to keep them in the project. So you take the base bid and you add up the alternates, and that gets you to the one point two. We didn't take the deducts.
The alternates are deducting.
The deduct, that's what I'm asking.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, well, we're not, right, well, then we're not deducting, we're keeping the alternates in the job.
That was our intention, right?
Yes.
Keep all the alternates in and not deduct anything.
Correct. In other words.
So they're gonna get done within the money that we have.
Within the money we approve, we, we are gonna move some money later from around, from another ARPA project that was lower to cover this, but after we looked at the plans, we really, if we didn't have to, didn't wanna give up those things, cause it kinda did everything that.
Their maintenance and longevity improvements, you know, we wanna.
That's why we didn't cover stuff.
Put the brick around the columns, cause that's gonna help preserve the length of the steel duration. We wanted to do the epoxy flooring, cause that's a maintenance on the bathrooms, if you don't have the epoxy, it's just concrete, and that's not gonna hold up.
Right.
So there, there were improvements that helped provide longevity to the, to the project.
But for that price, we will get everything.
Okay, it's just, it was, I was a little confused, so I'm like, it said deduct, and I'm like, okay, but it's saying keeping in the project, I just wanted to be clarification on that.
Yeah, we actually had another version of that letter where we didn't have the, uh, any of the alternates listed, cause that one might say alternate one, take out, and then the other two stay in.
Yeah, this one, you, you took alternate ones taken out, but the other two and three would stay in.
Yeah, cause we had another version that was just to state that all of the alternates would stay in the project, and it'd be to accept the bid for one point two-two-five million.
Yeah, it, it was, the second letter was clear, but we put the first one in.
Okay, no problem, I just, I figured you'd be able to explain it.
Yeah, that's how I was confused about when you were asking that question.
Me, too, but anyway.
You know it's gonna ask.
Ain't nothing wrong with that.
So we got three bids on the project, uh, they did vary quite a bit, but that's just how the bidding process is. And Kuzan Services is the low bidder. They're out of New Orleans, um, we have worked with them before on other projects, they like to pull people from all around the state to come help them, so you'll see people from Baton Rouge, Lake Charles, New Orleans, all coming.
Hopefully, New Iberia, too.
Hopefully, they can sub some people out, we should definitely give them some, uh, some names to help with that. But, yeah, they're, they're a good company, um, and they're ready to get the job, they're excited.
Yep.
Yes, sir.
Start and completion, what you thinking, timeframe?
Uh, we're anticipating, you know, if this gets approved, we'll work on the contracts, so we've probably got another forty-five days before actual, like, groundbreaking kinda work. So we're anticipating.
Forty-five what?
Days.
Forty-five.
Or forty-five, you sounded, you said four, in no way.
Forty-five. Uh, and then, um, I'm thinking the summer. You know, the weather is gonna be the biggest factor.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, question for Freddie, so during construction, is the existing pavilion gonna be closed or?
No.
No?
No, we're still gonna, um, almost all, all the work is from that line back, okay? So I'm not saying there won't be some inconveniences, but we'll make all of our fairs and festivals this year. Now, when the Spanish festival comes around in April, I am sure that, you know, construction will be hot and heavy, but they can still retain the front area that they're utilizing now. So I don't think it's gonna be, you know, balconies, uh, Spanish, what else? I thought of another one. Literary, that's it, but all of them, I think, will still not really be impacted.
Yeah, there's a guardrail on the back.
We'll just leave it up.
Facing the bayou, there's that one guardrail, and we're gonna ask them to keep that guardrail up as long as possible.
Yep.
And it'll contain the, the construction from the existing, and like Freddie said, there's really not gonna be much impact between the two. Electrical is all separate, uh, access to the pavilion is, is, you know, from the main part of Bulling Plaza, so it's really just staging areas that might be inconvenienced, but that's, we're thinking maybe along Fulton Street or something like that in those parallel parking spots, you know, just where out of the way of the main parking zones. But we're gonna coordinate all of that with them, we, I think the, the work on the, uh, Visitor Pavilion in Bulling Plaza, when we did that project, that was worse of a situation with gumbo and everything. Contractor said there were too many styrofoam cups in his dumpster.
Yep. Anybody else?
It looks really good.
Thank you.
And I'd ask you.
Continue the bill together.
Yes, sir. Thank you all. Then I'd ask you to please vote your machines. Appreciate it. And when you think of all the fairs and festivals and everybody that uses this, I mean, it's gonna, it's gonna be good for the whole community, and my hope is that once we have this, as we start with Test Tunes, we can reach out and do some different things that bring more people, and, uh, I think it's gonna do nothing but really pull our community together and be a really positive, positive impact.
Awesome.
Alright, six G.
Resolution number twenty-three dash one fifty approving change order number four administrative for the City of New Iberia Asphalt Overlay Project and authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documentation in connection therewith.
I need a motion.
Motion. Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Brooke Marquardt and a second by Councilwoman Deidre Ledbetter. Yes, sir, tell us about it.
Uh, so this is a deductive change order, uh, the contractor ran out of days in the project, so they got themselves into liquidated damages. So this, uh, accumulates two months' worth of liquidated damages, uh, we wanted to get those done in the month that we pay them, that way we're not paying them and having to take money back at the end. So this basically penalizes them, not, it's not a penalty, it's a fee, it's forty-two days for the months of, uh, uh, June, uh, July and August, uh, for a negative decrease of eighty-four hundred dollars to the contract. You will have to, we will have to do another one for September, they have forty-eight days total, this is only for forty-two. The next line item triggers substantial completion once we get to that one, and then they have additional days to get the punch list done, we talked about that, but if they run late on that, then the liquidated damage will.
Start again.
Again, so.
Correct.
This is not a final, but it just captures what's been accrued so far. So they're giving you money back.
Yes, ma'am.
So I would say next time, we need to raise that fee, cause.
That fee will be raised next time, it will not ever be two hundred dollars again, I can promise you that, I learned a lesson. You can't make it too high, then you start scaring people off, but we've been looking already with other communities are doing and other contracts, and that definitely will be raised.
Cause I know probably every council person here probably had to answer questions about where are they? I haven't seen anybody.
And our office did regular.
I bet you were getting calls, too.
Yep, yep. Any other comments?
Do we know?
Yes, ma'am.
Why they took off? Was there a reason?
Yeah, they went to another job.
Yeah.
They went somewhere that the liquidated damages were probably higher, and they just bought their time off. Basically, what they did is say, huh, well, for about ten grand, we'll get out of here.
Yeah.
That's why we have to make our liquidated damages higher next time.
Yeah.
They won't leave us.
I certainly had constituents call and asking, where's the road crew? I'm like, what do you mean, where's the road crew?
Yeah.
Because I was seeing the concrete road crew.
Right.
Not these, so, yeah.
Yep, we learned a lesson.
Okay.
Anybody else? Then I'd ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you very much. Six H.
Resolution number twenty-three dash one fifty-one approving certificate of substantial completion for the City of New Iberia Asphalt Overlay Project and authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documentation in connection therewith.
I need a motion.
Move.
Second.
Mayor President Ricky Gonsalana, and a second by Councilwoman Deidre Johnson-Reed.
So the project, uh, as we establish it, is once the streets are overlaid, they've reached substantial completion, they're usable, uh, there is a punch list that you will notice is attached, there is a punch list for every street, with a dollar value associated with each item, uh, that they have left to remain to address. They do have a crew in town that's called the Cleanup Crew, their job is to clean up the mess behind the, the, the big guys that make all the mess. So they're going through cleaning up, strippers are in town, uh, they're just putting the yellow stripes, there's a separate crew that does the white, they got two different machines, so they don't, some crop and famine, I don't have a schedule for them yet, but, uh, with the acceptance of this, it triggers their forty-five days to get all of this stuff done and, uh, and whatnot. When we get to September's payment, whatever's not completed off of this list that we can strike out, we will reduce their September payment by that amount, so that holds that money above and beyond retainage.
Yes, sir. Before we go further, I have a public service announcement, it's only for information, this ends our asphalt program for the most part, okay? We have spent the twelve point five million. If you vote yes, we will be able to continue with another road program. If you vote yes, we will be able to continue with another road program in October. If you vote no, this will be the end of our road program because we have spun the money. So, anyway, as Ms. Peggy used to say, spun the money. So, I just wanna put that out there, and I'm gonna try to put it in some kind of commercial, some kind of real statement, because where we are right now, this, this, this is a, a key moment in time that if we don't get that money, that is not gonna cost anybody any extra money, it's no new tax burden. A yes vote keeps our taxes right where they are and lets us continue with roads. So if you like the roads we're doing, well, there's only one way to perpetuate that. Anyway, just took a little second, yes, sir?
So now we talking about the end of our road program, we did have a discussion about Pollard Street, can I ask him if the, did you find out when they're doing the sewer? Do we have the money still, or no?
Well, we're gonna long be finished with the project, and so that's.
We didn't know.
Yeah, but that, that's, I, I know now, uh.
Next council meeting, I'm gonna have another administrative change order, cuz we have, being this is a unit price project, a unit price project, we have to balance the budgets. So the next one coming is gonna be change order number five, it's gonna balance the budget for the sixteen streets that we just completed. You're running about two hundred fifty-seven over budget on those sixteen. Overall, the whole project, you have about three hundred thousand over budget on the complete project, it's about three point six percent on the, on the project. So, that won't be the final because they're not gonna have all of these striping and everything completed. We'll have to do a, a minor, uh, one at the very end, it should be plus or minus ten grand by the time it's all shook out. Because I've estimated, I forecasted everything, and that's next change order you can get next meeting, everything that still has to be done. So, we're gonna be overall about three hundred thousand over on the asphalt project itself, from our original budget estimate to where we actually finished up.
Yes, sir.
Is there a way we can, uh, maybe you can explain, or you can explain to the general public why Pollard Street was taken off?
I got a couple of calls, that's all I know.
Because we tried to analyze ahead of time, and I'm not saying we're perfect, it's gonna happen. We tried to minimize the future road breaking of those streets, because in the past, we'd finish a street, and then they were ripping it up very soon after. So we discussed that with all our utility companies, including in-house, our utility, which is the sewer. Well, when we realized that Pollard Street really had some sewer issues with the infrastructure, then Vince did some investigative work, we camered, we looked around. We realized it's a huge project, so had we done Pollard Street, we would be ripping it up way too much because of the sewer issues. We weren't ready to fix the sewer yet, that is in a budget, and that will be coming in all of our sewer work. But it made no sense, after we saw, you know, the amount of damage, to, to go ahead and do Pollard now, because we're gonna rip it all up. So that's the reason why, so it would just be put off to hopefully a yes vote and the next road program.
Thanks for clearing that up.
Yes, sir, thank you. Yes, sir.
I would be remiss if I wouldn't piggyback off of your thoughts. And like my aunt said, the money is spun. If you want some more roads, go out and vote yes. You can fix Pollard Street, you can fix Bank Street, you can fix Ambassador Mall, go out and vote yes.
Thank you.
On the road proposal.
Yes, ma'am.
So, I just wanna piggyback off of what you guys said, and say, well, one, yeah, I agree with that. However, I want people to know that when they see Hopkins Street being torn up to do the work out there and the drainage and all that, that is not part of this road program, the state is doing that work.
Yes, and they're gonna put it back together after they tear it up.
Put it back together, exactly, it's gonna be a, a new street, but I don't want people to think that we extended the road program and then added Hopkins. No, that's the state doing that work.
Right.
So, just so we're clear, and by the way, for all the people who said, where are the lights, what happened to them, they're coming back in the park.
It's coming back.
Yes.
And we're gonna get some more light on Hopkins Street.
Exactly.
Working through that.
It, it is a little darker, though.
It is, yeah, yeah. The mayor's on it.
And I went and ro, I, I said, well, most of them were broken, but they weren't all broken.
Nope.
And I, I saw that, I mean, I went and saw for myself, so I'm working on that.
Yeah.
Anybody else? And, uh, yes, ma'am? Nope, okay.
No.
Oh, I saw that hand moving, I, I didn't know. All right, then, please vote your machines. Thank you very much. Thank you, sir. Okay, six I.
Resolution number twenty-three dash one fifty-two, approving execution of an amendment to the intergovernmental agreement by and between the city of New Iberia and the Iberia Parish School Board related to school resource officers for the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four school year.
I need a motion.
So move.
Motion by Mayor Timur Ken-Goslin, and a second by Councilman Martin Lewis. Questions or comments?
This is just extending what we already have, or we have to renew it every year?
We are adding another resource officer.
Oh, to which school?
I'm gonna tell you, cuz I don't wanna blurt it out, just to make sure.
Anderson, Hopkins, John, John Hopkins.
Yeah.
We already had one there. That's what we did the last time.
The addition's not in there?
Nish is not?
Oh, Nish was not in here in the bomb.
Cuz we are gonna be adding another, another.
It didn't say that in here, but.
What is, this, here, the bomb?
What does it say?
I don't know anything about it.
Well, we have two right now, and we're gonna have three.
This is the ones we did before.
Which are schools? They got three schools on there.
Yeah, but we remember, I remember we did Johnson Hopkins the last time.
On this, on this is, New Iberia's Nish.
Nish, that's what I heard.
Anderson Middle School.
And John Hopkins.
And John Hopkins Elementary.
But that's. Anderson, what, previously.
Anderson, what, previous, right.
I wanna say Nish and Hopkins.
Yeah, we only had two, now we're gonna have three, so it is.
So it is Anderson, but the other, cuz the other ones.
So that is why we're doing this, cuz we're adding a third.
At Anderson.
Yes.
Yep.
Okay.
On that point, does anybody know when the old Anderson is gonna?
I know that all of their, uh, proposition passed, and I know they're in the planning, but I do not.
Kids are gonna be moving next year.
They're gonna be moving next year?
They're moving next year.
Okay.
Next school year.
They gotta build that.
Yeah, they gotta build that.
I think they're temporarily moving, right?
I saw, I know.
No, that's a permanent move, when they move to the school next to Westgate, they're redoing that building to accommodate the middle school.
Yes.
Construction has started already over there?
I haven't, I haven't passed by there.
I don't think it started yet, I mean.
But they, they said that the kids are moving next school year.
Okay.
Okay. All right.
So questions, comments? And I'd ask you to please vote your machines. Appreciate it very much. Six J.
Resolution number twenty-three dash one fifty-three, awarding six and twelve month bids for supplies.
I need a motion.
So move.
Mayor Timur Ken-Goslin, and Councilwoman DeeDee Johnson Reed. Any questions or comments on our six-month bids?
That's the, uh, the email you sent us, right?
Yes.
Cuz I looked through it, yeah, okay.
Seeing nothing else, uh, please vote your machines. Thank you very much. Six K.
Resolution number twenty-three dash one fifty-four, accepting donation of property from Larry Miller to be used at the senior citizen center at the former Park Elementary.
I need a motion.
Motion.
Second.
Councilwoman Brooke Markcott, and Councilman Martin Lewis, uh, I need to thank Larry Miller, he called me and said, we're gonna be demo and rebuilding a McDonald's. Do you have any use for the chairs, the tables, the booths? He sent me a photograph of him, the guy's very generous, does things for the community constantly. I said, yeah, I need him, I want him for Park Elementary. So we haven't even talked about that, I just made the decision, but that would give us, uh, tables and chairs in our new senior citizen center.
That's excellent.
Cuz we are struggling, we all know that that building is a challenge, so anything I can give for free, anything I can scoff that is still good, I'm gonna do it. So immediately, when he asked me if we needed it, I didn't ask y'all, I'm asking you now, but I just said, yeah, and grabbed it, so, uh, that, that's.
It's a great start.
Yeah, it's a start.
It's a great start.
I was hoping he'd be here tonight, I'm shocked that he's not, so we could thank him in person.
Yeah, well, you know.
That's super nice.
You know where he's at, stop by McDonald's, I'm loving it, uh, the one-on-one meeting.
Darby Lane.
Yeah. Yeah. Yes, sir.
Well, I wanna thank him, too, uh, for donating to our city, senior citizen, I know DeeDee love it, we all love it. It just goes to show that, uh, has, has Mr. Larry Miller ever been to one of our council meetings? I don't remember him ever being.
I don't think he ever comes.
No, so I said that to say.
And he's made many donations.
But it lets you know that there are people in the community that cares, that pays attention to the whole city, the west end. I mean, there are people that live in the west end that don't know that they're having, that we're working hard on getting a senior community center.
You're right.
So thank you, Mr. Larry Miller, for keeping your ears and eyes open to the needs of the community, thank you.
Definitely, good cause, I mean, good, good, good cause. Anybody else? Then I'd ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you very much. Seven A.
Introduction of ordinance number twenty-two-three dash twenty-three, and ordinance amending approved budget allocations for American Rescue Plan Act funds received by the city of New Iberia, amendment number seven, and setting for public hearing on October third, twenty-twenty-three.
I need a motion.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman DeeDee Johnson Reed, and a second by Councilman Martin Lewis. Discussion on this item.
Think we hammered that one out pretty hard.
We did, we did.
Know that one by heart.
This is just the money we're spending based on.
Mm-hmm.
The projects, right? And we had already allocated this money.
That's where we moved some of it that was left from the all-in-water separated to the steamboat pavilion, but yes, it, it, that's exactly what we're doing. It's, it's, we're not having changed the pot, we're just moving the ingredients.
Moving it around, yeah. I thought that's what.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Questions, comments? And I'd ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you very much. Seven B.
Introduction of ordinance number twenty-two-three dash twenty-four, and ordinance amending section two dash seventy-six of the Code of Ordinances of the city of New Iberia related to the filling of vacancies on city of New Iberia boards, commissions and authorities, and setting for public hearing on October third, twenty-twenty-three.
I need a motion.
Motion.
Thank you.
Motion by Councilwoman DeeDee Johnson Reed, and a second by Councilman Dustin Swer. Discussion on this item.
Can we also?
Yes, ma'am.
Add it to the website? The city's website, when we have an opening?
Oh, yeah, to, to publicize it, sure, sure.
Yes, yeah, and to the Facebook page.
No problem.
Thank you.
When we add it to one, we do TikTok, Instagram, anything we can, so we just stick it everywhere.
Yeah, but thank you for putting this out here, we've been, I've been waiting for it.
Okay. Any other comments? And, yes, sir?
Cut and dry.
Yes, sir.
We done debated it, we done washed it, rinsed it and dried it.
Yeah, was a good way to put it.
And hung it up.
Hung it up.
Yeah, hung it up, yeah.
Great, then, uh, then I'd ask you to please vote your machines.
If you're not, if you can't speak in public, you can't serve on the commission.
Exactly. Now you'll know when we have an opening on a board.
You will, you will. Seven B.
What's another seven B?
Oh, wait, I'm sorry, seven C, sorry, not checking them off fast enough.
Introduction of special ordinance number twenty-two-three dash twenty-two-four dash oh-one, and ordinance adopting the budget for the city of New Iberia for fiscal year ending October thirty-first, twenty-twenty-four, and setting for public hearing on October third, twenty-twenty-three.
I need a motion.
Motion. Second.
Councilwoman DeeDee Johnson Reed, and Councilwoman DeeDee Ledbetter. Discussions.
So, all of our comments, changes, whatever, was incorporated in here?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Went through the whole budget and looked around and, you know, made a lot of little small changes.
Okay. And we will get a bond copy.
Oh, yes, ma'am, yeah.
Once approved.
Yeah, for the, for the next meeting. The only thing we didn't do yet, and we will address that later, is our opportunity with the dog shelter. I, I didn't quite figure that one out yet, so that's something that, you know, that's a, I, I think it's a standalone item, and it should come on its own anyway. I didn't wanna cram that in while we were doing the budget, so that'll be probably the first thing I bring when I figure that one out.
Okay.
Yes, uh.
Yes, sir.
You know, after reviewing the budget, I think we're in a position where we're gonna provide a lot of impact to our communities and our citizens, our community with this budget, and, uh, it's gonna go a long way to show what, what we can do as a governmental body in affecting our communities.
It will.
I mean, this is, we talked about it when we originally started, that the second year would probably be the most impactful year, and I think that's what you're gonna see. A lot of things taking place in this year, you know, the, the, the money, so.
Definitely, I mean, as we talked about, uh, last year when the auditors came, that we're not a bank, and those days that we had stacked up of operational money would go down. And they need to go down, cuz the money needs to go back in the community where it came from. This year, this budget is real, we did it last year in last year's budget, and we are really doing it in this year's budget as well. Yes, ma'am.
So, um, can we give, like, a status on projects, like, what we completed already, what we're gonna work on in twenty-twenty-four, so that the community can see the things we've completed versus what we're gonna work on? Cuz we had said we would always update them on projects.
Sure, no, we can do that, I, I will, and, and I mean, it's a good time to do it, because we're reviewing everything. Let us get through the two more weeks and approve, cuz I'm still gonna be, Kevin and I and my staff, we're still gonna be working on the budget, uh, right up till we adopt it, I mean, if I make any changes, I'll bring them, but we are still looking and researching quite a lot. I was on the phone with Mandy today, uh, Kevin and I talk all day long, I mean, we are working through, you know, a lot of issues. So let me get the budget, pass the budget, and so let's say after budget's over, then I'll put something together.
And listen, it doesn't have to be aligned with our fiscal year, we could say at the end of the year.
Right.
Before we start next year, we will give an update on the projects we've completed versus what we're gonna do in twenty-twenty-four.
Definitely, and we kinda have been keeping track and putting some stuff together, but I think, you know, let me get through the budget, and that'll be good, because people kinda do get, it takes so long, we talk about stuff sometimes for six months to a year before we do it. Then they, no one will ever understand the tricks and pitfalls of projects, and how it takes a year, sometimes a year, and sometimes it takes six months waiting on facility planning to give us the green light to go, and then a year of construction, so you're right, many people are kinda like, well, I, I, I keep hearing about it, and it's not happening, even though it is. And then I do think they forget pretty quick, you're only as good as your last trick, so I do think at times, they, they forget about a project, so that, that, that'd be good, that'd be fun to do.
Yeah, and we could do it twice.
And we have a whole bunch coming, so it'll be good for people to, to kinda see, you know, what's happening.
Excellent, thank you.
Cool. Any other questions or comments?
And, ma'am, listen.
Yes, sir.
You know, for those that don't know what we do, budget meetings, you know, five hours, boring.
Not boring.
Very, very interactive.
Very interactive.
Advocating on, on behalf of the public, that's what we do.
Yes.
We're not just sitting up here drinking water, we're working behind the scenes a lot, so that our community can have proper and adequate funding for all the services that we render.
And what no one ever sees is not, not the budget meeting, the times you're on the telephone, the times we talking in person, the times we go look at things and kinda flesh out all these concepts and ideas. I don't think anybody ever realizes how much time this council puts in, along with my staff and myself, to come up with, you know, come up with this book.
Garbage cans ain't picked up.
Yeah, it's a lot of work, but that's our bread and butter, that's what we do.
Yep.
And I'd like to say thank you to your staff for.
Oh, definitely.
Doing all the hard work to kinda get this together, because they got some great things planned for twenty-twenty-four, and so.
We do.
I'd like to commend them for all the work they did.
And it is a lot, a lot of work to pull all this off, it really is, it really is. No, I got, I'm blessed, I got a great council and a great staff, it's almost like I'm not at work. Well, not really, but anyway, sort of.
We can change that.
Yeah, I could, I hope I don't. Any other comments? Then, uh, please vote your machines. Thank you very much. Oh, okay, I got to step out on this next item because it
Next two.
concerns me.
Next two items.
Two in a row, right?
Yeah, two in a row.
Somebody come get me.
Both of those?
Yeah, just, uh, it won't take long, I don't think. All right, Lainey, you want to, uh, ordinance number 2023-25, planning zoning?
Resolution Number 23-155, a recommendation for final approval to consolidate lots at 403 Laurville Road according to a plat of survey by Acadia and Surveying Incorporated dated July 10th, 2023.
Do you have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Markot, second by Dustin Swir. Any comments?
I have a question. So, does, um, when you guys combine lots, does that trigger a reassessment of the property?
Um, the assessor looks at it as a single lot of record rather than four or five, um, individual lots as they were, so yes.
Okay, okay.
But I, I don't think it changes the schedule
No, no.
for assessment, so I don't think it triggers
Okay.
reassessment, but
No.
You know, like a sale will be in the records and they'll pick it up as they go through, so.
For the next cycle.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I don't think it changes the assessment schedule.
No, it doesn't.
Okay, I'm, I'm, that's what I was asking, if it, you know, triggers for them to go back and reassess the property because we've made a change, I didn't know.
Oh, no, no, it doesn't.
Only on a reassessment year, you'll get, when it comes on to reassessment year, everything gets reassessed, then they'll recognize the changes that you made.
Yeah, they'll look at it at that time.
Okay. Do you ever go back and look to see if these things, if it reduces our property taxes or anything? Not the, because this particular, I'm just asking in general, this has nothing to do with this particular one.
Um, not to my knowledge.
Okay, just asking. It's rubbing. It has nothing to do with this one, I just, you know, my point.
Informational, informational purposes only.
Exactly.
All right.
Anybody else have any questions?
Miss, miss
Go ahead, Brooke.
You had a question?
Oh, yeah, just a comment. So, one less door hanger if you're in District One campaigning.
Yeah, that's so true.
Be one property.
Mr. Lewis?
Isn't it, this is basically, uh, Freddie's Yard making Freddie's Yard bigger.
Absolutely, it's really making him buy another lawnmower.
It doesn't change the size.
It don't change, it don't change the size?
No, sir, it's, the size remains the same, we're just consolidating lots where there were two or three different lots
Okay.
on the property, removing lot lines, it's the same, it doesn't change the size of the property.
Just consolidating, pretty much.
Exactly, yes.
I have, I have, I have, I have some property I want to do that with too, that's, yeah. Good.
Any other questions from Ms. Jane? Seeing none, hearing none, please vote your machines. All right, had motion passes. Ordinance Number 2023-26, Lainey?
Resolution Number 23-156, a recommendation for preliminary plat approval for a parcel of property on East St. Peter Street.
Do you have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Lewis, second by Ms. Ledbetter?
No.
Oh, Ms., Ms. DeeDee, uh, any discussion? Jane, you want to explain something a little bit?
Want to ask the mayor to come back in?
Four.
This is not his, right?
This is not his.
It's not his?
Oh, yeah.
I thought this was his.
And we moved on to the next one?
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought it was two.
You thought it was two.
He said, when he walked out, he said, I got two items, so.
Yeah, but it, one was his and one isn't.
Yeah, I didn't think that said his name.
He did say two.
He did say two.
All right, so you
It failed.
You got to get something out of there. All right.
Call for a motion.
Who we on?
Eight B.
B.
Eight B. Do I have a motion?
Yes, we did.
Oh, y'all already did have a motion. All right, well, I don't know where we at. Okay, any comments, questions, comments? Thank you, Ree.
I asked mine on the other one, so I don't have a question.
No questions, no comments?
Why?
Then I'd ask you to please vote your machines.
You gonna make Freddie go review the tape?
I'm gonna look tomorrow. I'm not even asking.
I got a camera somewhere.
It is, mm-hmm.
Nine A.
Public hearing in action, Resolution Number 23-136 on the state of buildings located at 620 East St. Peter Street, District Five, per Resolution Number 23-96.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Deedee Johnson-Reed and a second by Mayor Pro Tem Ricky Gonsal. Jimmy?
Uh, the people are here for the property.
Okay.
I'm gonna let them come up and tell y'all what they want to do.
Sure.
You got pictures?
Yeah.
So, so we have a motion.
Do we have a motion?
Didn't get a motion.
To do what?
It's a public hearing.
Just open up a public hearing?
Oh, it's public hearing.
Yeah, no need a motion.
I'm sorry, it said motion here, so I did it.
They want a mo, you need a motion to open a public hearing.
That's on St. Peter?
Yes.
Yeah.
Right at the corner, right before Ann Street.
That's their burn house?
No, well
The one next to it.
The one before it.
Next to, yeah, it's right before.
Is that house, there's an empty lot and then the burn house?
Right.
Hi, my name's Janet Burning. Inherited this house, my husband passed away in February, and I got this at the end of March, and I'm just trying to decide, I was gonna see if maybe I could try and remodel it, and then go from there, you know, see what it costs to fix it up and stuff before tearing it down.
So, ma'am, um, I'm the, the council person for that district, um, your house is in my district, so here's the, my question would be, um, what, is there a reason why you guys haven't boarded it up, because there are people going in and out of that house?
I've tried boarding it, they buzzed the door down, it's, I, I know the guys when I see them, but they don't listen to me when I tell them to get out.
Have you called the police?
I did.
Okay.
And every time they go, they don't see them. But they usually hide on the lot on the side where the trees are all like, they hide in there until it gets dark and then they go in the house.
So, um, when do you think you would be able to
Well, I'll start work October 3rd, I'll be driving a tractor, working the fields, so I'll be able to start.
Working on the house?
Yeah, putting things into the house to get it back, you know, looking like a house. But I was gonna put some doors that lock where they cannot break the house down, you know, doors to get in, because I, I told them they had to leave and when I do call the car, people pass, they see, they call me, I call the police station, by the time they get there, they hiding, or they in the lot next door where all the trees are, they hide in there. So, I figure I boarded both doors, front and back, where they cannot get in it, and go from there, and if some reason it's gonna be too much, then we'll just tear it down.
Okay.
Yes sir.
So, ma'am, you, um, have you fully went over the preliminaries, what you have to do, Mr. Jimmy, about getting an estimate and bringing back up the code and
Yeah.
all the expenses that you're gonna have to incur? So you, you, she, you do understand what
I've had somebody look at it before my husband passed away.
Okay. And, and, okay, just want to make sure that you did, she, did she file a permit yet?
No, I didn't do any.
Not yet? So you
I just didn't know what to do until I started getting the letters and I said, well, I'll just find out what has to get done, you know, it's my first time getting something like this.
Okay, all right.
Yes sir.
I just want to give her some advice, I mean, I got friends and as well as myself, like, every house I ever boarded up, nobody got in it. You gotta get, you know, then fly, when you gotta screw it, ten, twelve screws all the way around, and I'm telling you, nobody has been in any of my houses, I got three of them boarded up. I have a friend of mine, I'm not gonna call his name because they got people that don't like to board the houses, I'm not, so I'm not gonna put him on the spot, but Jimmy, you're building, there's a way you can board those doors up where nobody can get in them.
Well, I figured just
So, I'm just saying, no, you may not, knowing I'm giving you some advice, we've had people say, oh, every time I board it up, they, they break in it, but if you, I'm telling you, they got houses been boarded up for ten years in neighborhoods where people are homeless, people are, uh, you know, in the other stuff that they shouldn't be into, and look, they, they sealed, so they can be boarded up. Now, I'm not trying to reflect the time that you're gonna give this lady, I just wanted to give her some advice, they can be boarded up, you, you just can't put two, three pieces of board over the cross, over the front, and, uh, think nobody gonna get it, they going in there. And I'm gonna tell you why, they said a lock is not for a, uh, thief, it's for an honest man, right?
Right.
Yeah, because if an honest man see, he gonna pull and say, oh man, it's
Lock.
It's, you probably can get in anything, but if you board it up real good with the screws, they're not gonna take the time to get in it.
Right, they'll go on to somebody else's property.
And we need to stop letting people say, oh, I boarded up, they always get, you're not taking the time, Jimmy, am I right or wrong? You're not taking the time and using the proper stuff to board those houses up, I'm telling you. I know ten houses that've been boarded up for ten years and ain't nobody went in them, and I know they done tried.
Yes sir.
So, Mitch, so how, how long have you been associated with this property?
Um, I got married in September, and my husband's aunt, she's from Generec, had the property there, and told him that he could have the place, because there was no, you know, nobody had
Nobody.
Yeah, nobody was living, and so we was, had plans to fix it, but he left for work in February and he died.
Very sorry for your loss. Very sorry for your loss. So, here's one thing that I would say, um, do you have any tissue, we have any tissue or anything?
I'm good.
I'm very sorry, I know this is hard.
He gave it to me in, the end of March, so I'm just
So, here's one thing that I would say to you, um, and this is not to discourage you from what you're trying to do, but I suspect this is gonna be a very expensive project.
Yeah, I know.
And you're gonna have to, you know, find some honest person to really help you do this work.
I have some family that'll help out too.
Okay, but, uh, Mr. Jimmy will tell you that based on the permit that you get, based on the estimate to fix the house, you may have to have a licensed contractor, so, um, the fact that you showed up tonight and that you are, um, trying to figure out a way to save this property, my suggestion, my recommendation to my fellow council members is to give you a little time. Now, here's the thing, I would tell you that we're not gonna give you a lot of time because this is a safety issue.
Yeah, I know.
I, I can't promise how they're gonna vote, but I'm gonna say, because you, you showed up here tonight and you do seem to want to do something with this, that I'm gonna ask it in the meantime, though, that you get this thing boarded, because like Councilman Lewis says
I sure will.
you can stop them, because I, I can tell you, I see people going in and out of there all the time, I've called the police to try and get them out of there, um, this is a s, a serious security issue for that community.
And it's, it's two guys, it's, it's the same two that's, I've been having trouble with.
And I, I get calls from the mayor pro tem, I've received calls from him, I've received calls from cus, um, Councilwoman Swir, both were people have called them because they didn't realize it was my district, and so we've all received a lot of calls about this, so this has been going on for a while, and I know you didn't own the property for a long period of time, unfortunately, you're inheriting a big problem.
Yeah.
So, um, I mean, we don't, we're not in the business of tearing people's houses down, that's not what we do, but we are in the business of making sure we have a safe community.
Well, I have an old house, it was a hundred years old, so we had to do a lot of remodeling on there, and we had to change a lot of the beams and
Yeah.
it came, it was worth it at the end.
Right, okay, so, um, my, my recommendation would be that we would give her at least ninety days, did she come back? She said she was gonna start in October, that would give her some time, so when she came back and we see some, well, she has to go to Mr. Jimmy first and get her permit and all of that, so, um, that's, that's my recommendation to you guys, since it's in my district, but, you know, vote your conscience, but that's my recommendation.
So, DeeDee, I, I think, you know, I think we, we're showing a little sentiment, and I appreciate you coming, and I know how difficult it is, but I would like to add, to Councilwoman DeeDee, I, I would like to see an immediate boarding up
Yeah.
and inspection of the property. So I think, in my opinion, if y'all guys on this, I'd like them boarded up this week, you know, whatever.
Yeah, I mean, okay, so today's, today's Tuesday, so I wanted to give her a little time, but we, I mean, I did ask her to get it boarded up.
No, no, just
Yeah.
I'd like to see them boarded up, and, and I'd like to get her back in thirty days to give us an update. I don't mind giving her nine, but I'd like to see thirty days, give me, if you got your permit, your appraisal plans, whatever, let's see what you got, but I, I do think, the calls I'm getting, I do think it needs to get boarded up.
Yeah.
It, it does.
So that's one thing that, you know, like I said, if you can get that done, that, because it's a sa, it's a safety issue, we want to keep the community safe.
We sure.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I, I think, I, I, I get, I, I would, Ricky on this one, because I'm sympathetic to you a hundred percent, but what I'm getting at, I think you give her ninety days to board up, I just wanted to make that clear, like, because then if you're sitting there for ninety days, but that's what I'm saying, so we're gonna, can it, can we do something in this resolution or the, what we're doing, to say it needs to be boarded up in
So you want a time, time limit on it?
Yeah, because you, you don't want to give them that, then it'd be ninety days until they board up, then it's gonna be another, so many, so this
Agreed.
So that's what I'm getting at, that's why I agree with him on it.
No, I, I did ask her to board it, but I did not give her a timeframe, so it needs to be boarded, so you're absolutely right.
Yeah.
However, I don't think that, I think we ought to give her at least two weeks to get this thing boarded up, I mean, she's got to find somebody and all of that, and she's got to make sure the place is cleared, she's gonna need the police's help, she could, probably can't do that till the weekend, by the weekend.
That's fine, I, I just think ninety days
No, I wasn't, and that's not, no, I wasn't saying that.
Yeah, okay.
But just, I'm saying, when she comes back in ninety days, we've got to see where she's gotten her permit, she's, you know, found her contractor, and she's getting ready to move on this thing, because it is a problem.
Yes sir.
Ma'am, all I was gonna suggest, we've never done two weeks, we've never done immediate one week, give her thirty days to board it up and clean it up, because I, I saw some pictures of some old stuff out there, some old clothes and stuff like that, so in thirty days, I think that we recommend that she has it boarded up and cleaned it up, because what I find when you clean those houses as well, they less likely to go in there. Now, you gotta clean the outside, that's what we worrying about, but the inside, the p- the re- one of the reasons why they keep going in there, cause they leaving something in there that they feel is for them.
Yeah.
Clean it up real good and board it up, and you probably gonna, uh, I don't wanna say eradicate, but you're probably gonna discourage those people from going back in that house. You know, now, how we gonna go about picking up the trash is.
Yeah, they, they, people add a trash to it.
Okay. My suggestion is to give it till November the seventh, which is the first meeting in November, to board. And then we can do a revisit at that time. But, and if it, cause if it's bad enough and she says she's gonna tear it down, and I have a, a permit to tear it down, there's no use in coming back here if she's doing that.
Okay.
Okay.
I mean, I, I think that's a good recommendation.
Let's, let's.
But that's about forty-five days, huh?
That's, yeah, they'd be forty-five days, you're giving it?
Right at it.
Uh, let's see, that's thirty to seven, yeah, that's about forty-five.
Yeah.
That way, she can get it cleaned up, she can board it.
Yes.
And by that time, she'll know whether she's gonna repair it or demo it.
Actually, they say about two months she have a, uh, you know, in like two months, if you're gonna decide to demo it or not.
What, what forty-five days work for you? Okay. All right.
So it would be the first, first meeting in November.
Yeah.
So, DeeDee Marla, just for clarity, I wanna just be a devil's advocate, and, and we've seen this in the past. So in forty-five days, if you can come in, it's not boarded, it's not cleaned, we may have to, we may have to take a different action, am I correct?
Yes, but what, what we, we're trying to do, again, we're not in the business of tearing down houses, we wanna give a homeowner an opportunity to fix their house, if that's what they wanna do. Because we only do, we only tear down houses because it's a safety issue for the community.
So, so I agree.
So, I'm gonna go with like, my, my fellow councilman always tells me, ugly meets cold. And so if you get it boarded up and it's safe, that's our main concern right now.
Okay.
Okay, so, we didn't really do it in the right order. So now, and now I need a motion and a, we, we, we didn't know what we were gonna motion and second.
I move that we revisit on the first meeting in November.
I second.
Okay, I have a motion by Councilwoman Deidre Ledbetter and a second by Councilwoman Deidre Johnson Reed. Any other discussion on this? Then I would ask that you.
Did we have to stipulate, did we have to stipulate, uh, boarding and clean by, by November seven?
Yes, boarding and clean within the.
Property cleaned and house boarded.
Yes, yes, definitely, definitely.
And she got, and she, she, she understands.
Any other discussion? Then I'd ask the motion machines. Thank you, thank you very much, thanks for coming.
Good luck.
Yeah, thank you for coming.
Thank you for coming.
Nine A.
Public hearing in action, resolution number twenty-three dash one thirty-seven on the state of buildings located at six twenty-sixth East St. Peter Street, District Five, per resolution number twenty-three dash ninety-seven.
I need a mo- well. Well, wait a minute.
Yeah, we don't need a motion.
Wait, wait.
No, yeah. Action.
No problem.
Can you pull up the?
Okay.
Of course, we cleaned up and we cut the grass since then and I boarded the windows, I put two plywood on the front doors.
You need to cut the grass, that was this morning.
I was gonna say, that's today.
That's today's picture.
I haven't been there, to be honest with you, I lost my brother five days ago, and we've been dealing with the funeral overseas and everything. So I haven't been there the last week, but I will definitely cut the grass this weekend, he's coming, the guy will cut the grass for me.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I just got some questions, so the, the, who's the owner on the assessment rule?
Okay, on the assessment. All right, on the assessment, it's Dr. Adele is the primary owner, and the mailing address is care of Asma Malama at twenty-one thirteen Morning Glory.
Okay, so we sent notice to that address, right?
Correct.
And we got a card back?
Yes.
Okay.
We got the letter back.
Okay, and did we get a receipt back?
I got the whole letter back, nobody signed for it.
I got a regular r- letter, but no, I just said that.
Okay, what about, did we send it to Highway fourteen?
Yes.
Do we get a letter back or a card back on that?
Yes. We got that back today.
And they got the card back or the letter back?
The whole letter.
Cause what the law says, if it's unclaimed, then you do regular mail, I mean, there's two notices.
That's what you got, regular mail. We did regular mail.
We actually, Doc got it and he probably gave it to me.
Yeah, okay. So who's the owner of this property, is it you or Dr. Malame?
We went to court the community property.
Okay.
I'll be honest with you, I was gypped so bad in court, I never signed the paper. Cause that man owned over four hundred pieces, I ended up with four pieces, ugly ones, I have to suffer with it. And that's why I never signed the paper.
On the, on the assessment?
Yeah.
It says Adele Malama, yes, primary, fifty percent, and Asma, fifty percent.
Okay. Cause I've been checking my phone to look at the statute, and it does say, if we give send, if we send certified mail and it comes back, then we have to send regular mail. It's two mailings. Um, so I'm not sure we have good notice on this one, if, if he's an owner and she's an owner. So we don't have a green card back on either one?
I have the green cards, cause they're on the back of the letter.
Right, but they're not signed.
They're not signed, right, right, they don't go pick them up?
Okay, and we didn't send any by ordinary mail in addition to that, right?
That's what she got, the ordinary mail, that's why she's here tonight.
Okay, so we sent two to her?
We sent one to her and one to Doc.
Yeah, Doc called me, he said that we have a meeting, I'll call, and they said it's not last week, it's this week.
Okay, so, let me back up, so we sent certified mail to her?
And a regular.
And a regular mail to her?
Certified and regular to Doc.
At Highway fourteen?
At Highway fourteen.
Okay.
I never got no certified, that regular mail, that's it.
Wait, what's that?
Just the regular mail, not the certified.
That's the certified, it came back to me, you didn't sign for it.
I don't, I never got anything on it.
See, that's it. You didn't, you didn't.
I got the regular mail, and Doc got the, he said the regular mail.
Okay.
And he called me on that.
Okay, so he got it?
Yeah, that's what he said, he got it, and that's when he called me.
Okay, so he got the notice, and you're here tonight?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I won't miss it, I see something needed there, I won't miss it.
I just wanna make sure that everybody knows, cause that's, you know, that's an issue that we have. We, we need to make sure everybody has fair warning about this, cause I'm not sure what the council's gonna do.
Yes.
But, you know, we need to make sure that we did what we're supposed to do, okay?
Hello, Miss DeeDee.
Hello, how are you?
I still love you.
So, um, obviously, this is in my district as well, and this is, I mean, this is a problem, I, I see where you boarded a window.
Yeah.
But the doors aren't boarded, and that door even looks like it's open from that picture, do you remember?
Which, which door, the one on the left?
It's not a door.
The one on the left?
Yes, on the left.
That one's open.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
So.
And the back is all open.
Yeah.
They keep kicking it, you can ask the police, we keep calling the police, even the lady who burned it, she threatened to burn it because she have an issue with my ex-husband. They cut the grass sticks door to, to the property, which is his, the house is, unfortunately, it's my share. He did not pay her whatever, she threatened she's gonna come back and burn the house, he thought she was joking, he never told me anything, have you told me? I would've told the police there is a threat, I mean, my God, I take threats very seriously. She came and burned, but thank God for the, the fire department, they were next door, they immediately got it covered and everything. However, when we, I went to board overnight, they stole both board, but I put nails, not screws like you suggested, which is a very good idea. I put, me and my son, and we came back the next morning, and it was gone, the two plywood is gone, on the door, on the front doors, both doors.
So let me ask you a question, so what, what are you planning on doing with this property? What, what, what do you, why did you come here tonight, what do you, what are you gonna tell us about the property? What do you wanna tell us about the property?
Of course, I'm gonna fix it, but I wanna make sure it's fine one hundred percent, his name is not on it. And that's my problem with the lawyer, I find my lawyer, but unfortunately, he did not do me good in court, you know? So, I never signed the paper, nothing, I'm looking for a lawyer, I talked to somebody, it was about a month ago, he's supposed to take the case, but he got a conflict interest with Doc or whatever, my ex and, but that's what I'm trying to do, to solve the problem on the property, which one is mine, it's one hundred percent mine, then I work on it. I don't wanna go waste my money and my time on it, which is, I hardly have both, and go back and he take it as you have from me.
Okay, so, just like with the last house, which is next door to this house? Um, we, we mentioned that this is a security issue, and what we, what, we can't get in the middle of you and Doc's situation.
Yes, ma'am.
Our job is to make sure the community stays safe, and we get as many calls about this house as we got about the other house, maybe more. And so, tonight, I was expecting you to come in and say, we're gonna board this up and make it safe for the community.
No doubt, no doubt, this weekend, the guy's coming from here, the one who cut the grass and boarded the stuff, he's supposed to do it this weekend.
I mean, this, this property also has a lot of trash around it as well.
But, believe me, the trash is not from us, luck in the back, the people from apartment, whatever, they dumped the trash up there. Abba, Abba, and then, and his wife, to come over there, all day, they were working on it before, about maybe three, four months ago.
So let me, let me ask you a question, so when did you board this, when did this board, boarding come up?
The board, when he sent me the letter, when he sent the letter, we boarded after. Just the window, the windows.
Okay, so.
We did the door, but they stole both, both the doors.
But the doors, it's been open.
Okay.
They kicked it, I cannot control them, they come every night, his name is Charlie, a guy and another guy, he keep talking to himself. It's killing me, every night, we go there, 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 I don't know, whenever we call the police last week, they took off and, you know.
Okay, so you do realize, though, that we're in a very, very precarious situation, because we've gotta protect the public. This house, not only is it open, but it's also burnt?
It, that one section.
And it's not secure, I know, but it's, it's still, it's not secure. You have no plan for when you're gonna fix this house, because you're not the one hundred percent owner of the house, and the other fifty percent owner isn't here tonight. And so, I mean, we're, we're in a situation where we gotta protect the public, because, I mean, I'm at, I, I.
I mean, it's really not a threat in the public, to be honest with you, I mean, it's a very solid house, house that.
It's not, it's, it's a threat to the public, because people are going in and out of there. People who don't live there are going in and out of there, doing things they shouldn't be doing, and there are other people that live in that community that don't feel safe, because they see vagrants going in and out of that property. And so, it may not feel like it's a threat to you, but in that, people that are in that community, it's a threat to them, because they have a place to go and, and hide, and then come out and do things in the community that they shouldn't be doing.
I think if I boarded, they will stop them from kicking it and go in, I, I, go ahead, go ahead.
The only question I have right now, the question I have right now is, how long have you owned, or you and Doc own this property for?
It's, it's been a, a long time.
How long, do you have any idea, can you, uh?
Yeah, that was gonna be my question about why I wasn't boarded before.
Ninety-nine.
There's some people living in it back in January.
Ninety-nine.
Ninety-nine.
Yeah, it's been a long time.
So you have, you have people living in here in January?
Back in January, yes, sir, last year.
Uh, you had them living in there, but.
No, no, they have the light on and everything, no, no, they have the light on.
Last, last year, twenty-two, or this year, twenty-three?
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am.
Twenty-two.
Yes, ma'am.
So twenty-two, January of twenty-two, you had people living there, I mean, we know there's people living there already.
Yeah.
We drive by it every day and every night and see people in there.
No, I, I mean, we're meaning renters.
Yes, you're right.
Yeah, no.
A lady and her husband and her, um, in-laws or something, like cousin or something, another guy.
When's the last time any improvements have been made to this particular property?
I'm next.
Would you know off the top of your head?
I would guess maybe when they moved in, they were working on it themselves, you know, they never paid any rent, I just told them, you know.
The reason why I'm asking that, and the, the reason I'm asking about the timeframe, is like, years and years have gone by, and nothing's been done. Honestly, I don't believe anything could be done, but I know this is DeeDee's district, but we get the calls too, cause it's coming, it's coming down St. Peter, coming into the heart of town. I mean, you really see this to be salvageable, in your opinion?
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, I mean, it's in good shape inside, the roofing, it's a lifetime warranty roofing, it's very.
Lifetime warranty on the roof, and the house is burnt.
Mr. Freddie, please.
I'm asking, the reason I'm asking questions, cause I just wanna see, I wanna know.
Have a right to ask questions.
I'm sorry, but I, I'd like to have respect, honest to God, please.
Just asking questions.
I'm just asking questions, I wanted to know the plan, what the timeframe was, this and that, and how many years I've been sitting there.
Right now, I'm gonna definitely.
So, now that I have my answers, I'll yield back.
Thank you, uh, you were next?
So, well. So, a couple. Jimmy, I, I'm, and I called DeeDee probably several times, we talked about this, and I wouldn't walk around the house, you know? In my opinion, it is, is far from salvageable, in my opinion, it would take a lot.
It's gonna take a lot of money.
Exactly, so.
I'm, I'm figuring fifty, sixty thousand.
I'm thinking more than what's.
With the burnt, with the burnt area?
Yeah.
That was a utility room on the backside, with the hot water tank, the washer and the dryer, that's all gone, all the plumbing's gone.
I'm gonna walk around it, and I noticed that, so.
You're gonna have to redo all, most, ninety percent of the plumbing, it's gonna have to be redone.
So my next.
And then the electrical will all have to be.
My next comment, DeeDee, is that she, you know, and I'm not telling you, cause you were talking, that when she answered you, she said she cannot stop people from going in and out. So she said she cannot stop the people going out, so we have an issue, we gotta public safety, she can't stop them, so this council has a public safety issue, in my opinion, if she can't stop them by boarding them up.
I cannot, anybody cannot.
Cause they can go through the back, it's burnt, so you.
I called the police and they could not stop it, I'm not powerful like the police.
Yes, ma'am, I understand, but I just, in my mind, the, the, you have an issue where you can't, we, we can't protect the public with the actions you're taking in my, into this house, in condition it's in, and I see, I see it being a real threat, I really do.
But I was talking to a couple of guys in the neighborhood down the street, they said they never seen anybody the last couple of weeks or so, over here, but I heard they stole my plywood.
Yes, ma'am.
Council Lewis?
I'm, I'm the board inspector, that's all, I'm the board inspector.
I, I like you, that's a good job, boy.
Everybody said, said, again, I agree with everybody, boarding it up is not hard, it's not. I have a friend, uh, I don't, I ain't gonna call his name, cause I don't know if you want me to come, he boards up almost for a living, it's very cheap. I mean, he might charge twenty dollars, I'm not saying that you're gonna let her board it up, but that, ho- those houses, now, you know I'm friends with y'all, cause I go to y'all businesses and hair stores and all of that. But every house that I've seen come, y'all have never boarded them up properly, that's why I kinda mentioned that earlier. You have to board, if you, if you, if you don't board them up, you have to board them up from the outside. They can't kick it from the outside, but if you're just locking it, and the door just swing like that, they're never gonna, you're never gonna be able to keep them out. So which, 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 it just feels like to me, the, not just yours, no, any house around town that, uh, is like that, it makes me feel that the people are leaving it open for people, say, hey, listen, this one is open if you don't have nowhere to stay, now that's unsafe. The reason why I say that, I saw a house, a family, this is a story, I got a lot of stories, good stories, it's a family that were fighting over property, the family. Listen, y'all, y'all think this, this true story, so one of the family members thought he had claim on the house, all right? So he started putting sheet rock, adding doors, whatever, everything. And I wanna call, every time, when they said he couldn't do it, guess what he did, took the doors off, let the doors stay open. And I watched that house go down and down and down, cause it wasn't secure. And, uh, his mindset was, if I can't have it, nobody gonna have it, all right? And the way he did that was he left it open for the rain, the wind, and thing. So if you, if you wanna destroy it, then just tear it down, but if you don't board it up, that, that right there is gonna get destroyed more and more and more. There's no way in the world you're gonna keep termites, var- vagrants, varmints, uh, weather, there's no way in the world you're gonna keep that house from getting worse if you don't board it up properly, no way.
Yes, sir.
So I'm, I'm just the board inspector, I told him when, ma'am, no, no, I was just saying, I, I, I cannot say, hey, this is properly boarded up, it's not. It's not, and it's never been properly boarded, no, 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 the doors, it's no reason for a house in this condition that's burnt to have door a- doorway access, no way, uh, Miss, Miss Adele, Miss Mahatma, no way a house in that condition, burnt, should have easy access. Doors are old doors, you can just really push on them, even if you lock them, they're gonna open. You need to board that up with some, uh, what's that stuff, two by, not two by four, plywood, this thick, about ten or twelve screws or sixteen around the perimeter, they will not get in it. If you don't, they can't, they can't, they can't get, I'm telling you now, all my houses is in the hood, I hate to use that terminology, and they all boarded, the ones that I'm not working on, and nobody get, I had some that people were getting into, I bought them right when they were getting into them, and I went, first thing I done was boarded them up, didn't have no problem, nobody, you know, and I'm not fussing, cause we friends. Nobody's gonna be able to tell me that if you board up a house properly, that people are gonna be able to get back in them houses, they not.
Yes, sir.
Cause they're not gonna take the time, you know why? Cause they got too many of them unsecure, they just looking for somewhere to do what they do. And if yours is available to allow the vagrants to do what they're doing in our city?
Yes, sir.
Then we're gonna always have this problem, so we as a council, I'm focusing on boarding it up securely, and saying, hey, if you didn't board it up properly, you don't care. You're just pushing the can down the road, putting us off, putting us off.
I will definitely do that, definitely.
You know, I, I watch houses go down, I'm talking about in less than six months, I'm like, wow. And that's what's gonna happen to that one, if you don't board it up, and the thing with the rain.
Okay.
I'm, I'm done now.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Is it an option for you to tear it down and just rebuild from scratch? It's gonna be a lot to fix it, though, from my understanding, so you might be better off just starting from scratch.
It's need to clean up, cause we cleaned it, we cleaned it a few months ago, we cleaned it really good, and I think they like that. Next thing we see, they bought a mattress and a couch.
It just seems like it'd be an easier option to knock it down, you knock it down, not us, you knock it down and just start from scratch building it, cause it's a nice, nice piece of property there.
I know, well, we get a board it for now, I bought windows, I spent over three hundred eighty dollars on glass windows, and we will come put in everything, I promise you, they break them off. It was a waste of money.
Don't waste your mon- I'm sorry, don't waste your money on windows, buy some two by fours, and when you're ready to repair it, not two by fours, uh, plywood.
Okay, that's what.
You wasting your money on windows.
Yeah.
Cause why you gonna look, make it look pretty, I mean, no disrespect, you've heard the term, that's like putting lipstick on a pig, why would you put windows on it? Board it up. Properly, spend the money on that. Screw, yeah, that's an old saying, I didn't make it up. And the, the end of it is, the pig gonna go waddle in the mud anyway, it's never gonna be pretty.
Good analogy.
That's an old saying.
Good analogy.
Yes, ma'am, I like that.
So, um, here's what my dilemma is, when you, when you started talking, you said that, you know, you and Doc each own fifty percent, you said that you don't own it, and you didn't wanna spend money on it until you knew that you owned it one hundred percent.
Yes, ma'am, but I'll remind them, board it.
And it, you don't even have an attorney that's going to, that, that's gonna make this happen anytime soon. So I don't have any confidence that this is going to happen, because if you didn't want, I mean, to me, you guys should've boarded this up already, because I know you've seen people going in and out of, or you've seen evidence of it, and the two, between the two of you, neither one of you spent the money to board it up, and, and there's a dispute. I mean, you've come in here multiple times telling us how you felt taken advantage, and so if he's not going to, if he took advantage of you before, he's definitely not gonna spend the money, or give you half of the money to go and board this up. He, he would've been here tonight, defending the property. And I absolutely don't like taking a person's house and tearing it down.
Yes, ma'am.
But I have to tell you that, based on the situation, the fact that he's not here and he owns fifty percent, and it's been open, and it is a, it is a safety concern for the community, I don't have any confidence that anything is gonna happen in the next forty-five days. If, if we went on the timeline we just gave the other lady, because you guys have a dispute going on, and you haven't come together on those things yet, I have no confidence that this is gonna happen in forty-five days.
On fixing wise, yes, that's pretty soon for it, but the, the border, definitely, I'm gonna border it myself, it don't matter what it costs, I'm gonna border it. I'm gonna have somebody and border it.
Anybody else, I mean, are you?
All, all I wanna say is, I, I can't get past the burnt, the burnt, we had talked about burnt, the burnt houses, we talked about them being worse than the other houses. It's a burnt house, you know, uh-
It's just the color, and the outside, it's just the black, it can be paintable. They cut it on time to-
It's not my district, but it's an eye.
You pick this again, Lane?
It's an eye still.
To the back?
Alright, oh.
Now, I'm sure there's termites all through it too.
You see the seals? The seals are up by chalk right there.
Yeah.
Go ahead. Door's wide open, it's a mess inside, that's burnt.
Go back to the burnt, look at that.
That's all burnt, go ahead, see the back?
She can't board that up.
Yeah, that's-
See the back?
That's the extra room, that's the one we're gonna go ahead and get rid of it.
It burnt and went up the, up those rafters, and all of that is charred wood. And on the inside, all the ceilings are black.
Is there any reason why Dr. Adele isn't here tonight, did he, he just didn't show?
Remember, he said last week he's coming, but then today he called, he said he's not coming.
I'm sorry.
If you do not come, you disrespect the place, I have respect for y'all, for the place, for my property to come and defend it, so I came. Although I'm not in any situation right now, we have a funeral going on, I just lost my second brother within two years. Two brothers died, massive heart attack, and I was on the phone with them, on the funeral attendant, and everything live.
Very sorry for your loss.
Thank you.
Very sorry.
So, but I said, I will come anyway, and I have a lot of people in my house, all my family and friends, all of them in my house, but I told them I had to come up here today.
I just wanted to say that there's a house that was burnt on Dale Street. Um, right next to the park, the little pocket park, it's completely boarded up.
Yeah.
And nobody can get it, and nobody has gotten in.
Nope, that's on the list for demo.
Yeah.
Okay, but it's, it's not, you know.
Yeah.
But you're right, though, Ms. Lady.
Yeah, it's been boarded, and it's properly boarded, and it's been like that for a number of years. So I'm just saying that, like Councilman Lewis said, you know, get that, that one inch-
Yes ma'am.
Plyboard, that board, and screw it all, lots of screws in it, but you'd have to do all of the doors, all of the windows, and you need to close in that, that burnt part at the top.
Yes ma'am, I see that.
Cause people will go in there too.
Yes ma'am.
And, and she need to tear down that part that's burnt, so that's a lot, I mean, I don't, I don't, I don't see, that should have been done already.
Yeah, yeah.
Should have been done.
We shouldn't have had- No, but that, that whole wing went-
Back up.
Back up.
Back, you picked up, right there.
That side.
That's the utility room.
Yeah.
The hot water tank is in there, the washer and dryer, now all that's gone, but all the plumbing's shot.
Yeah, I already talked to, to somebody about demolish that side, you know, take it off, and the good wood, we're gonna take it and put it to the top.
They don't have no more good wood on that, Miss Adele.
Yeah, it's in the other side, in the other side, in the front, it's a very good wood, that's what the carpenter said, he said he's gonna use it to the top, cause it's the same wood.
Uh, no, and I'm gonna say, I'm sorry.
Hang on.
No, I was just gonna say, ma-
Okay, no, finish up.
I was just saying, you might wanna find some better carpenters, cause I don't want no carpenters that's telling me, take this bed, this good wood, and put it on this, that's, they don't do that no more.
Only the white one, the one that burnt.
Right, but-
The one that burnt, that's the one at the top.
Okay, uh, just, just one comment.
I, I looked back at-
Go back around.
I looked back at the day it burned, and, and, and the day the house burned is over a year ago. It seems, yeah, it seems to me, if my house burned over a year ago, I'd have sure burnt, uh, twenty-two.
I went to the fire, it's been a-
Eight months?
Yeah.
Yeah, this has been a year.
Yeah, about a year.
About a year.
About a year.
Yeah. So, if my house would have burnt a year, a year ago, I'd have sure had this all boarded up already, and taken care of, and it's still not done. So I mean, that shows me the lack of, y- you know, faith that they wanna do something with it, and I think that we have a program that addresses public safety, and this meets the criteria of, of removing this property, because we have a public safety issue. It really does, in, in my eyes, it meets the criteria.
Councilman Swear.
Oh, yeah, thank you, uh-
So look, no disrespect to you at all.
Yes ma'am.
Just looking at this house, whether it's your house, or so and so's other house, wherever the house is far.
Right.
Um, the issue I have is, you know, we talking about boarding something like this and that, it's burnt. And this isn't a sore, it's a public safety hazard, and the message that, that we're sending, or I, what I'm gathering to the people, let's just go ahead and board this up and, and call it a day. That's not, that's not the message I, I, I wanna send. So, nothing has been done in eight months since it's burnt. You say you put boards up here and there, I just think it's gonna be kicking the can down the road, and like Ms. Dee Dee said, you're in a, you're in a situation where you have another owner, fifty-fifty, and you admitted, you admitted, you admitted that you weren't gonna do anything until you had a hundred percent ownership, so we might be sitting on this for god knows how much longer.
But in the meantime, I'm gonna board it.
In my opinion is, the public is, in my opinion, tired of looking at it, coming in. And we're gonna, it's gonna be, look, it's gonna keep coming back to the council, cause y'all haven't decided anything yet, so it's gonna keep coming back, coming back, coming back. And my opinion is, we just need a, I think we need, we're sending a message the right way, but I just think it's gonna, it's, it's nothing gonna be solved, cause we've been, we've seen it before, is my opinion.
Yes ma'am.
I'm definitely gonna board it, yes ma'am.
You mentioned that you had a carpenter come up there and look at the property, did he give you an estimate on what it would cost to fix the property?
We, we did not talk exactly about the money, but he, he's, he was telling me what he's exactly gonna do, I told him we need to be boarded, that's when you sent me the letter, Mr. Jimmy. And he said he's gonna take off that little bit, cause it's added to the building, it's not like with the building, that little burn, the burn one, the one for utility.
I know, but you need, one of the things that we established the last time, when I was helping you with the house, is that you need a written estimate that needs to go with you to the permit office, in order for you to get a permit. So if you've had somebody out there, and they haven't given you a written estimate, you're not even prepared to go to get the permit that you need to fix the house.
I'm gonna let him pass by, Mr. Jimmy, now to-
He need, he needs a written one, he can't come by and just talk, we remember the last time we had to get a written estimate?
Yes ma'am.
And we, it took us a while to get that written estimate on the other one, and, um, and that, that's a requirement, that's a requirement.
Okay.
There's enough damage in that house, it could go, it's gonna be over fifty percent value, so everything needs to be brought up to code, you gotta remember that, everything. So the electrical panel that's on the outside, all of that has to be brought up to code, all the wiring inside, cause it's all scorched.
Right.
But we talking about on the outside, not the inside.
No, so, no, but see with the permit, you gotta get the permit to fix the house.
You're gonna spend money and not have the inside fixed, you gotta look further down the road, are you gonna spend what it's gonna cost to fix that house? Or you're gonna just leave it boarded?
For now, we're gonna board it, then we're gonna solve the issue.
How long? Uh, uh, no, I need a timeframe, how long are you gonna leave it boarded?
I mean, what time, six months maybe?
Oh no.
I don't know.
We gave delayed it, we gave-
There is a limit on it?
We gave delayed forty-five and ninety.
Is there a limit on the board?
Ninety, forty-five visit, that's. You're gonna do that, you do exactly what you did for the ladies.
I'll be honest with you, ma'am, this is a tough one for me, um, to make a recommendation, because of the fact that I just, I don't know that I have confidence that it's gonna even get boarded, because you and, uh, Mr. Adele, Dr. Adele, own this thing together, and I, if he had been here tonight, and we'd be able to talk to both of the owners, and you guys looked at each other and said, we're, we're gonna go and spend the money to board this house properly, so nobody could get in. I probably would feel more comfortable, cause we don't wanna tear down your house.
But if he come, you know how Doc, he will shout, he will use everybody's everything.
But at least he would show us, that, he would show us that he wants to save the house.
Mr. Bruce are sitting here.
No, no, but I guess my thing is that- It would show us that he wants to save the house, but the fact that he got the letter, he didn't show.
That's what I'm saying.
You're here, but you only own fifty percent of the house, he might say, I don't wanna board the house.
I still will board it, even, it's my cost, even it's my money, I will still board it, whether he's here or not, and I was hoping he would not come, to be honest with you. I mean, I know, he said he's gonna come, then he changed his mind, reflect to me.
You do realize that for us, we need to see both owners, we need the owners up here.
Can't force him.
I know, but again, though, it's, it's putting us in a, 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 almost an intenable position, because we are, we gotta make a decision about your, a recommendation about your house. I gotta make a recommendation, and they gotta vote on it, they can vote, you know, they don't have to take my recommendation, but my thing is, is that I need to feel confident, and right now, I'm not confident that this is gonna work out, because-
No, you should, because I thought I'm gonna dema- I'm gonna de- board it, and I will board it.
Here's the thing about the boarding, when you look at this house, there are so many places that you need to secure this house for it to be safe for the community. That whole burnt area there, I don't know how you're gonna secure that, because guess what, if I take my fist and I punch it through a board that's burnt, I can knock straight through it.
No, no, this one, I said, we're gonna demolish it.
She says you're gonna tear that part down.
You're gonna tear, so when you board this house up, you're gonna tear that down at the same time.
Yes ma'am, I just talked to Mr. Jimmy, he said I need a permit, go do it.
Okay, cause I mean, I, I'm not the strongest person in the world, but I know if I punched my fist through that thing, I know I'm gonna be able to open it up, and that means other people are gonna be there. I'm serious, I mean, I'm trying to, to, I'm really trying to help, because I don't want to not, I don't wanna give her, not give her an opportunity to board it. I just feel like there's a lot going on here, that top portion, you know, how you gonna get enough paneling up there, I mean, it's just, this is not gonna be an easy thing to secure this house. It really isn't, and I just, I'm really struggling with this one.
And the windows that are boarded, the window in the back, it's half boarded.
Right. Again, that's what makes it easy for them to grab it and pull it.
Exactly.
Now, all they have to do is grab it and pull it down.
The other one's boarded from the inside.
And I'm not even a criminal, I know I could do that too, to get in there.
So-
No, the front one, I bought it from the outside.
This is a tough one.
This one is not broken, I just put the, the, they just put the, the plywood on it, it's not broke in the back window. The glass is still good.
But you need to secure it, cause what'll happen, they'll pull that, they'll pull that board off, and they'll break the glass to get in.
Okay, so, I have a question too.
Since my, since, since my colleague is, is obviously, oh, I'm sorry. She was first?
I, I don't, I didn't call Dee Dee.
Go ahead, Ms. Deidre, you first.
M- my concern is, once you tear that burnt part down, what's against this, isn't it burnt on that side of the house too?
No, no ma'am.
On the inside?
Mostly the outside, they cut it, the fire department, thank God they cut it.
But when you tear that part down, I can see some black soot and everything, you know, like it's burnt on that wall that were divided. So you'd have to replace that wall for sure too.
But it's dark, it's just dark, it's not burnt, the wall inside, no ma'am, it's not.
Okay, may I ask Mr. Jimmy to comment on that, because you actually went over there, and you took these pictures.
That wall, that utility room is where the fire started.
Right.
And it went that way, into the house.
So there's gonna be a hole there when that-
Exactly, that's what I'm, that's what I'm saying, that one, that would have to be-
There's actually a door, that used to, that used to be up there, but the door's gone, so when you go into the utility room, you're done in.
Okay.
Yes sir.
So, since my colleague is struggling, obviously, um, could we consider option two, she's admitting that she wants to demo the back of the house, so why don't we give her thirty days to demo the back of the house, if it's not demoed, then we tear the whole house down?
Yep.
Could do that, we giving her thirty days to demo the burnt piece, if she don't tear it down, we tear it down.
I'm sorry. No, 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 he's saying, the part that you're talking about-
You're saying, you telling us you wanna demo the back of the house.
It's not the back, it's the side of the house.
Yeah, that's what he's offering.
And board up the rest.
And board up, demolish it.
Cause I don't wanna see, Dee Dee, I don't wanna see it come back, if she can't board it up and tear the back off, then we go move forward demolition, that's what two does.
I'm just, I mean, I know that house next door, we just gave the lady time to do it, this is her first time in front of us, she just had, she just got ownership of this house within the last year, she hasn't owned this property for a long time, based on what you just told us, they've owned this property since nineteen ninety-nine. Now, clearly, I haven't been back in, in, uh, New Iberia that long, but I know it's been a problem since I came back. So I'm, I am, I'm struggling, because I'm like, why hasn't something been done, because this has been a problem, I know, for at least six years.
That house was burnt for six years?
When they were living in it, the people, they lived for like, about three, four months in it.
In ninety, in ninety-nine, they bought it, in two thousand, it was up for tax sale, in two thousand and seven, they redeemed it. It was adjudicated in two thousand and nine, and they redeemed it in twenty nineteen, that's the history of the house.
Okay.
Okay?
Is that a big deal, like?
Yep, that means, when it was adjudicated, you didn't pay some of your taxes.
I mean, usually Doc, the one who deal with that, but the issue on the taxes, we used to live in, in Houston, we used to live in Texas, when we move up here, different law, different everything. But when we found out that's a, for stuff for tax sale, Doc said he was paying, but for some reason, he could not find the receipt, they said he didn't pay. He said he paid, it was a lot of issue, however, we went and recovered, so that's, I don't think that should be a big deal, as long we catch up on that.
He's just giving me a little history, because I haven't lived here, so I don't know the history of this, but I guess, uh, what I, I guess what, he's trying to help me to kinda have a better picture of what's going on here.
Yeah, but it was not that important for the, we're talking about-
Cause I, no, it's just because I asked about how long you guys had owned the house, that's why.
A permit would have been issued, it would have been in that report.
Okay, so, I guess, I'm, I'm really struggling with, with not saying, not recommend, recommending demolition, because I'm, I'm, I'm struggling, because I feel like this is something that could have been taken care of.
I was sitting over the other house that's, yeah, demolished, when I didn't even know about it, have I got a warning at least? I would have emptied from inside.
But, but-
The house was full, three whole kitchens in there.
But, but, but you did get, you did get notice, because-
No, I did not.
We had four visits.
I never got a notice, never.
But remember, remember, we had you come in front of the council several times.
Yes ma'am, I came before.
Right.
And when I met Mr. Landry, and I have my daughters with me, and they're witness, what he told me, he said, talk to your councilwoman.
And I came up here with you, I came, I met you here multiple times, we, I went with you to the permit office, I went with you to the property.
Yes ma'am, that was before. But when we met at the airport, he told me, I went and met my sister for the first time.
No, she's part of the other house. Okay.
Can we, can we stick to the house on the agenda?
Yeah, we stick to this house, and what we gonna do with this house?
Can I call for the question right now, with this?
No, what I'm saying, I don't want to keep demolishing my houses, give me time, give me chance.
Look, I'm, I'm for what he said, give you forty-five days to tear it down, board it, clean it up, if you come back and it look worse than that, we giving you ninety days to have it rebuilt or demolished, that's-
That sounds fair.
No, so, so, okay, so-
No, no, what I'm saying, what we did for the last lady, I understand what Dee Dee's saying, that the lady is a new customer.
She's gonna do it on her own.
I understand that, but they basically got the same problem tonight.
Right, the difference, I was making the point that the difference is, the lady just took ownership of that house in March, versus they've owned it since ninety-nine.
Totally understand that, but the issue is not what took place then, it's, it's what's taking place now.
Agreed, agreed, that's what I said, I'm just, I, I'm trying to make, get, make up my mind and make a recommendation to you guys, you guys go, obviously, you're gonna vote the way you want. I like option two.
What recommendation you make, cause we've been waiting.
I haven't made it yet, I'm, I'm about to make it.
We need you to make the recommendation.
I was just trying to get clarification, can I get clarification?
That's what makes it strong.
I was trying to get clarification from the person in my district that has a house, and, you know, I'm just trying to get, alright, so and so now, what we'll do is, we're gonna go ahead and give you the same opportunity we gave the last lady. You got forty-five days to get that house to make sure it is safe, which means, board it completely. All those holes gotta be closed, and that other, that burnt area has to be torn down. Yeah. And that wall has to be secured along with everything else. On, on November seventh, when we come back to the council meeting, Mr. Landry's gonna take pictures probably the day of or the day before. If that house is not in that condition that we all think it should be in, then I'm gonna recommend demolition, because at that point, we cannot continue, this house is a major problem.
And it's in a major part of town.
Exactly, and the, the people that live around there, they want security. We get calls about this all the time, not just me, and it's in my district, but Councilman Swear, the Mayor Pro Tem, they both called me about this house multiple times. So, but I wanna give you a fair shake, cause you are here tonight, and you're showing that you have some interest, but you gotta come through, so you and Doc, y'all gonna have to work this out, cause November seventh, if we're not, yeah, we will, we will, we will take a different action, if it's not the way we are talking about it tonight, and that you agreeing to.
And she can't stack anything in the road. This is a demolition construction project, you gotta have a dumpster, a trailer, and it's gotta haul off every day, or go in- This is a demolition construction project, you gotta have a dumpster, a trailer, and it's gotta haul off every day, or go in a dumpster. I can't put it in the road, right there.
And she needs a permit.
Yep.
But they, they said only if you are commercial, you cannot put it out on the road. If you're residential, you're taxpayer, you put.
This is a construction project.
That's what they told.
But it's.
This is a construction project.
Construction process, project.
It's different when it's a construction.
But get somebody with a trailer, and when they tear, get somebody with a trailer and have it haul them out, go burn it in the country, but make sure the burn banner's lifted.
Yeah. Yeah, burn it right now.
I'm serious, I know it's. They got some easy ways to get out of this stuff, get somebody with a trailer, one of them guys that tear down stuff, haul iron, junk, get his trailer, load up the trailer, take it away, you can't leave it there, there gonna be another violation. Make a deal with them, say, I don't care where you bring it, just don't dump it nowhere in the city, cause we know. And then, we're gonna come back and see a neatly secured house, and we're gonna talk about giving you some more time.
Yes, sir.
But other than that, I'm gonna follow her lead, we're gonna follow her lead. Cause I think we re, we really are giving you, I, I love you coming up, I love you, I love your personality.
I wouldn't miss it, I would not disrespect you.
We're giving, we, we actually giving you a big time break.
And we definitely want to, we, we don't wanna tear down your house, if you're gonna do the right thing, really don't.
Okay, so, looks like.
I'll make the motion.
Right, well, let's make sure, help me with the details, cause this is one that has a lot of moving parts.
Right, it, it's a revisit on November the seventh, and it has to be completely boarded up. That burn part torn down, and all of that wall where it's torn down has to be covered, and that burnt area on the top, it's got to be enclosed, too.
Yes, ma'am.
All holes.
All the holes, yeah.
Contractor project, she has to have a dumpster.
Yeah, you have a, yeah, have to have a dumpster to get rid of the.
When does the work start? When is she gonna pull a permit?
A dumpster, a trailer, yes, somebody to haul it away.
In a week, permit in a week.
Pulling a permit and start.
One week, to pull a permit.
So, well, it, my, so, she has to November seventh.
To do all of that, so the permit needs to come.
Huh?
Exactly, that's what I'm saying, so.
Like, she needs to go pull a permit this week.
That's right, you're giving us some advice, but that's not, if you pull it a week before, then we know she not gonna have it done.
We don't care, as long as it's done by November seventh.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so, forty-five days.
Yes.
If I can get a second.
I hope it works out.
You gonna second?
Yes, ma'am.
You gonna second the motion?
I'm second, I'm sorry.
Okay, so, I have a motion by Councilwoman Deidre Ledbetter, and a second by Councilwoman Deidre Johnson-Reed, with the details we just laid out. Is there any discussion on this motion before we vote? I mean, we've talked a lot, just making sure. Okay, then, I would ask you to please vote your machines. Okay, motion passes. Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, good luck.
Thank you, ma'am, appreciate it, have a blessed.
Okay, we have no discussion items tonight. I'll move on to Councilman's remarks, and I'll start on your end tonight.
Uh, only thing I have, uh, Sugar Can Festival's coming up this weekend, starting off Thursday, Farm Fest, and then going throughout the weekend, I wish, hopefully everyone can come out and enjoy it. Then we have some nice weather, so, uh, other than that, that's it for tonight, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yeah, so, so my thunder, I was gonna say the same thing, but I hope people come out, I hope the kids are able to come out for the parade, um, it's usually a very nice event. And, um, I just wanted to thank everybody in the community who's been helping, um, with the cemetery and all the other projects that we have going on. We actually have one more thing coming up soon, that Councilman Lewis and I and, um, Ashley Orff are sponsoring in the Weston Park. We are gonna have a food pantry day, and, um, it's, we're gonna have fruits and vegetables for sale for very, very cheap. And we are gonna have, uh, a health fair, so people can come and get some of their little tests done, and even uh, some cooking demonstrations to show you, if you're not a person who actually has a lot of vegetables on your plate when you cook, come out and we will teach you how to cook some of those vegetables, you'll get to taste it, so you'll know that you can actually add these vegetables to your meals, to make sure that you're getting some healthy options on your plate. So, that's gonna be November tenth, uh, from eleven to two, in the Weston Park.
Thank you.
And thank you, the city is gonna be.
Send us, send us some information.
I will, I'm gonna get you guys some flyers and everything.
Okay.
Good, thank you.
We, we definitely want the seniors to come out, too.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, uh, Neighborhood Watch will be Thursday coming, uh, six o'clock PM at the Slime and Theater. Uh, everybody is invited to attend, and, um, it's on the twenty-first, Thursday the twenty-first, which is day after tomorrow. And I did want everybody to know that, um, on the sample ballot that I looked at, our street improvement proposition is the very last thing, so, uh, and most people that get an absentee ballot have already received them, so, uh, we hope that you will consider voting yes uh, for the proposition, if you want the streets, uh, to continue to be improved, thank you.
Last on the ballot, first in your heart. If you care about your car, anyway. Yes, sir, I'm sorry, it's your remarks.
Yeah, no, no, you stole my, no, no, yeah, yeah, obviously, that, that's an important issue, the last thing on the ballot, so we, we definitely need to consider that option, improving our streets, but on another note, um, I know we all got some, uh, additional funding from the mayor, for different projects, so, you know, thinking through the process and how we can make the most impact with our dollars, I truly believe that if we put our dollars together, we can make more of a significant impact, so I'm offering to my colleagues, rem me your project, and I'll split my money amongst you guys to help you make your money go a lot further.
Thank you.
So, but I'd like to see the project.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Quick math, four thousand apiece, right?
It is.
Okay. Got you for four thousand.
No, we got twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight, six, so that's more, I was thinking seven, yeah. Okay, cool, thank you.
Forty-seven sixty-one.
Forty-seven sixty-one.
Cool, thank you. Um, friend of mine, I have a couple customers that work at the Research Center, University of Louisiana Lafayette Research Center. Um, they have employment opportunities right now, uh, I, I don't know how else to say it, uh, they asked me to kinda be careful on how I say it, but they said I can say it, I can announce it, so, uh, employment is pretty wide open over there, they have openings in almost every position at the U, U, University of Louisiana Lafayette Research Center on a base. Uh, there are plenty openings over there, they asked me to not say a number, but if you're unemployed and you're looking for a job, check with U L L Research Center out at the airbase. And, uh, as always, you can contact me, and I'll put you in touch with the people, they can give you the website, easier ways, better ways to get online and get your application in, my number is three three seven five seven seven three four four eight. Again, most important thing, there's employment opportunities at the University of Louisiana Lafayette Research Center in New Iberia, Louisiana.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
I just wanted to, uh, thank NIPD, they've been very present in our school zones lately, watching traffic, um, something that's much needed. I've also seen these poles go up in the school zones recently, so I'm assuming that's for the cameras?
That is, they're, they are coming.
Okay, good deal, but I do appreciate them, in the meantime, uh, covering our school zones to kinda keep the traffic under control. It's amazing what parents can read whenever the police are present. That's it.
Thank you. I just have one remark, this is for the council, tomorrow at three fifteen, our, what we sponsored with UL, our little study of the West End and the promotion of entrepreneurship, and as a side note, some community input on what we might do with the Doray property that we will be receiving very soon in a donation, and a million dollars to go toward its, its, its next phase. Uh, so, if any of the council members wanna come, you help sponsor this, uh, that's at three fifteen in the meeting room up in the front, at where the participants, and there's over twenty-six, will kinda present what they got out of the class, so I'm just inviting, you know, all of you to come, uh, and it starts at three fifteen. Uh, next meeting is October the third, and, uh, looking for a motion to adjourn?
To move ocean.
Thank y'all, good meeting.